All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Goffstown School Board meeting. I call the meeting to order at 7 o'clock. If we can all rise and say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of British Commons, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. So we're going to start with correspondence.
This evening in the correspondence folder, we have the press release that we had sent out. And we're very happy to announce Jennifer Freitas is our new special education director.
All right, thank you. All right, commendations, good news. Lilly.
Hi. So GHS has had a pretty exciting couple of weeks back from break. Our AP tests were super successful. So congratulations to all of the students who took those. The GHS Theater Club had their improv show last Friday. The GHS Chorus had their last concert of the year. And our next concert, we will be performing the Mountain View Select Choir, which is very exciting. Ryan McCann was announced as a national scholar, which I'm super proud of her personally. One of my very good friends, so shout out to Ryan. And our track and field team did very well. We had two best times. So congratulations to them.
Great, thank you, Lilly. Wendy?
And I'd just like to add, all of the schools would like to thank all of the parents, our parent organizations, the school board, and our kitchen for putting on a phenomenal teacher appreciation, staff appreciation week last week. The staff all across the board. We're just so happy with everything. So just a special thank you to everybody.
Great, thank you. Do you have anything else?
Nope, that's it for tonight.
All right. Anyone else? Commendations, good news? All right, see you none. I'll open up to public comment. All right. I don't see anybody's hands up, so I'm closing public comment for tonight. So we have two presentations tonight. The first one is a Guatemala field trip. We're going to do that one quick. Mrs. DeMarco, if you want to come on up to one of the microphones.
Welcome.
Hello.
So just to give a little context before Mrs. DeMarco starts, this is a trip that we have done in, at Goffstown High School in the past. How long has it been since we've been able to do this trip? I remember we tried to schedule this trip maybe right around pre-COVID.
We did. So we had a trip that ran, it was scheduled for summer of 2020. And we did actually go this past summer, finally, the summer of 2023 with a group of 20, or not 20, 12 students. So it's a service-based trip. Senora McKinnon and I have been passionate about giving students the opportunities to stay with host families. So we do, we call it a service adventure because they do do some fun things. But we also stay with the host family in a small town in Central America. We're looking at Guatemala this year mainly because we have some students that did go to Costa Rica that are potentially interested in traveling again. And so we wanted to kind of give an opportunity to them to be able to participate without having to repeat the same experience. And it's the same company that we went with in 2023. Both Aaron and I were really impressed with them, just their organization. The experience our students had was positive. They enjoyed pretty much all aspects of the trip. And we were pleased from teachers' standpoint as well. So we are looking to kind of repeat the experience, just changing the location slightly to Guatemala.
Awesome, thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Go ahead, Dan.
Not a question, but more of a comment that for many years, my wife and daughters went to Guatemala.
Oh.
Not through the school system, but through another private organization, actually related to the church, and worked with a doctor that was in Guatemala. And they would go to the small little fields, stay with the host families. And it was an amazing opportunity for them to interact. And yep, they did learn a little more Spanish. Or not Spanish. Yeah. And so me, I still talk a little French, though. I didn't go, by the way.
The dates would be June 15th, '24 to June 25th?
We just need to set it. So when we originally set this up, we didn't have the calendar. So we were looking at kind of after school gets out.
Okay. But so you would, you would-
We will adjust.
You would adjust it so that it wouldn't impact the end of the school?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
No, we're planning on leaving after whatever the end date of the school year is.
And how many students are you potentially looking to book for this?
We would prefer not to take more than 20. Last, like I said, this past trip that we went in 2023, we had 12, which is fine. We just, we want to keep it authentic. So we're hoping for no more than 20. If we end up with, you know, huge amounts of interest, then we may come back to you and say, can we go in 2025? But for right now, it's every two years is what our department is kind of looking at, is going, you know, to give students at least one opportunity during the course of their four-year study of Spanish here at GHS.
So the cost is estimated to be around $2,500 per child?
Yep, and then the airfare. So it's a little bit under $3,000.
Yep. And I would share with the board, I am a supporter of travel. They have my full support. And I would ask the board to approve the trip.
I have a quick question.
Yeah, go ahead, Nicole.
I would also like to reiterate, I love that we're giving the kids opportunities to travel, especially internationally. One thing I noticed was it said travel insurance was not included in that cost. Will there be an opportunity to buy that?
Oh, absolutely, yes. I think there's like a basic coverage that's included for everyone, including medical. If there's a basic, and then parents can decide when they-
It's just an elective option when they sign up.
Exactly. And that would include even all the way up to cancellation within a certain amount of time. So there's definitely different layers that they can then add.
Thank you, Nicole. Anyone else? Go ahead, Carol.
Do, with the host families, is it just one student per family, or do they double up?
No. So there's at least two students per family. And it depends on the community that we're placed with. But they're definitely going to be in at least groups of two. And they would be same-sex. So you would have, you know, two female students with a host family or two male students, possibly more, depending on whether the family can accommodate that and what the community, you know, is and the makeup of host families that they have there.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? So is there someone ready to do a motion?
I can make a motion that we allow for the 2024 Goffstown Guatemala Service Adventure to occur.
Thank you. Do I have a second, Nicole? Any further discussion? Okay, see you none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous. Thank you so much.
Thank you for having me.
You're more than welcome to stay, or you can go home.
Please don't. Please go home.
We appreciate you coming here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Marco. All right. So the next presentation is everybody's been looking forward to for a long time. I do want to make it clear that this is a information night only for the board. The Goffstown Board invited some new Boston Board members that we have in our audience and some of our state reps. I will allow questions only from those two groups and only a few questions because the board does have other work that we need to do tonight. The presentation will probably be about 40 minutes or so. Zach and Noah has information that if anybody in the public has questions or comments, you can reach out to them at another time. So with that, I'll let Brian introduce everyone.
Great. Well, good evening. It's my pleasure to welcome Zach Sheehan is from the New Hampshire School Funding Fairness Project. So welcome, Zach. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank our new Boston School Board members for attending, as well as our state reps. And I think I see our new state senator, who I have not yet had the chance to meet either. So welcome to you. So thank you, everyone, for coming. Those of you who've been around for a while have heard me complain about school funding for many years. Is complain too strong a word or too weak a word? I believe that my work as a superintendent should be nonpartisan. And this is a nonpartisan topic for me. There are, there are so many challenges associated with school funding and how we pay for public education in the state of New Hampshire. So I probably will reserve my remarks. But this is something that I'm very passionate about. There are incredible challenges. I started studying this topic back in the early 90s. And that was before the first Claremont lawsuit. So I have a lot of history with this topic. And unfortunately, things are not better. Things have changed very little in the last three decades with respect to school funding. There have been and continue to be lawsuits. So I'll just stop there and I'll introduce Zach. Welcome, Zach. Thank you for being here.
Yeah, thank you so much for having me. I really appreciate you all letting us have this opportunity during your school board meeting. Thank you to everyone who showed up tonight to listen. There's going to be a lot of information. I must admit that normally when I give these presentations, I'm standing up there. So this will really test how fashionable all of our slides are. Everything we do is public and open to everyone. So these slides will be available, actually, I think are currently available on our website. Noah had them up already. So it's fairfundingnh.org/Goffstown. And we'll make sure to send them around. So everything's available. There's more information up there. But to kind of jump into it, I'm the executive director of the School Funding Fairness Project. We're a 501(c)(3) nonpartisan organization, nonprofit. We have our roots in the aforementioned Claremont lawsuit. Some of our founding board members have been doing legislative and legal work around school funding for decades. We've been around for about three years as a formal organization with paid staff. And we do a lot of education on education. So we do these types of presentations all over the state. We were in Lisbon last week, Berlin the week before. We're going to Claremont and Warner next week. And so we do a lot of just kind of, how does our school funding system work? What's the connection to property taxes? Why do we, as an organization, think that those are kind of deeply inequitable? And what are some of the potential solutions? Spoiler, a lot of them lie at the state level. So I'm glad that we have a lot of our state-level elected officials here. So yeah, I'll jump right into it and happy to, you know, answer questions as outlined beforehand. And then also, if people don't get to questions, I'm happy to stay after outside and chat with folks as well. So to kind of do an overview, earlier this presentation hits on kind of three main themes, right? Both taxpayers and students are not treated adequately. These issues are intrinsically linked because of the way we fund schools or don't in New Hampshire. This is not a stagnant problem. While the court cases, the Claremont decisions that are cited often are from the 90s, this problem is not, it does continue to get worse. And, you know, with a lot of the costs rising over the past few years, it's just getting continually worse. And lastly, but kind of that's where we'll start, is that this system, in our view and in the view, I think, of the Supreme Court rulings, is unconstitutional. And that's being put to the test again, as Brian mentioned, two court cases. One, the trial, and CONVAL just wrapped up recently, and another one that got filed last year. Next slide, please. So this is just kind of a run-through of the different topics we'll be hitting. We'll come back to this throughout the presentation to kind of check in. But first, just an overview of the constitutional responsibilities. You can just hit it two more times, please. So first, these are the kind of main Claremont decisions, so these main principles, right? The first is that the state of New Hampshire has this duty to pay for the cost of constitutionally adequate education for every K through 12 student. And now the term constitutionally adequate, you know, it's a very specific terminology. And we'll get into that in a second. The second responsibility out of these Claremont decisions is that the taxes that the state uses need to be uniform in rate across the state. Next slide, please. And so to kind of go a little bit more into that adequate education, right? That is not just, you know, a baseline. The Supreme Court decision was very future-oriented. So it was not just about what was needed when the rulings were issued. It was looking forward. It was, how do our students succeed in five, 10, 50 years moving forward? And so the justices were not kind of restricted into what is it right now? Even though the term, you know, the word itself adequate is not really, doesn't really do it justice. It was future-oriented, looking to how they would flourish in the 21st century. And then, you know, there's been additional decision sent since. This is from the Londonair decision, which was in 2006. And it kind of went a step further. And so whatever the state identifies as comprising that constitutional adequacy, it must pay for. And this has been really playing out in the CONVAL lawsuit, which had its hearing wrapped up about a week and a half ago, where you really saw the state not provide any additional defense of their own definition of adequacy. You know, kind of really kind of wanting to put it in a box what they define because the more you define it, the broader it is, the more they must pay for it. And so that financial obligation cannot be shifted onto local school districts. And regardless of their relative wealth or need is also really important because as we'll see throughout the presentation is that relative wealth and need varies a lot around New Hampshire. Even town to town, five miles apart, you can have dramatically different levels of wealth and levels of need in the student population. And then another piece from that Claremont decision, Claremont II, actually, is that if property taxes must be used to fund it, they must be equal in valuation and uniform in rate. And we will get into why that has, in our opinion, never really been true and definitely is not today. So two more clicks, please. So these are the two lawsuits I've been mentioning at a very high level. The CONVAL suit, which has just had its hearing, lasted about three weeks, was filed four years ago and is basically arguing that the amount of money the state gives in base adequacy, so that per people amount, not talking about any of the differential aid, is not enough. And CONVAL tried to come up with a number, you know, do their own kind of analysis of what would that base adequacy amount? And they came up with this number as a little under $10,000 per student, a base adequacy. And they were arguing they should be getting that much. The state's arguing effectively they shouldn't. And the judge is kind of trying to figure out how to rule on that. And one of the big pieces, and he was talking about this throughout the trial, is, you know, separation of powers. The legislature controls, you know, revenue and spending, right? And the judicial branch is very hesitant to kind of step into that sometimes. So that's been a big piece of the lawsuits back and forth throughout the years. And the RAN suit, which was filed last June, was, is actually a group of taxpayers, property taxpayers. And they're suing the state effectively saying that because the state downshifts so much of the responsibility to pay for public education to local property taxes, that's effectively how we pay for schools. And those rates are very dramatically throughout the state. They are not uniform in rate as a Claremont decision said they should be. So there's a lot of similarities. And the RAN suit also does touch on adequacy in a slightly different way. That hearing will be in October in front of the same judge. So it'll be really interesting to see how those pieces play out. Regardless of whatever the decision is, they'll definitely be appealed to the Supreme Court. So this is not going to be solved anytime soon. All right. So let's get into some of the more specific inequities. So to start off, this is total revenue for New Hampshire school districts from last year, or kind of a year back, but the most recent data we have. And the really important part here is that that big blue piece, it says local property taxes, about 60%. So 60% of our revenue for our public schools comes from local property taxes. Another 10% comes from SWEPT, which is the statewide education property tax, which, while named a statewide tax, is raised and retained locally. The state does not touch those dollars. So it's effectively also a local property tax. So essentially, 70% of all school funding, public school funding in New Hampshire, comes from local property taxes. The green pieces are the pieces that come from the state. But you can see that the vast majority does come from local property taxes, which is not necessarily inherently wrong or inequitable, but combined with a few other things, really does create some significant disparities. Next slide, please. And to put that in perspective, and I'm seeing how difficult it is to see some of this text, I'll try to walk through a piece of it. The bar on the left is the property tax in New Hampshire. So it's not just school-specific. What you can see is that the school funding piece of it is the driving force behind it. The municipal, there's a lot of municipal-level taxes that are property tax-based as well. But you'll see that the next two highest taxes are nowhere close to how much we rely on property taxes as a state for our revenue. And that next bar, the one with the arrows, is there are two main business taxes, the business profits and business enterprise tax. And I like to point that one out because a lot of conversation in the State House every year, especially now during the budget season, do focus on business taxes. And there have been conversations and proposals, you know, that have passed over the past number of years to reduce business taxes. And, you know, yes, that does make an impact. But property taxes still are the most significant piece of revenue for the state. Next slide, please. And what this is showing is the delta, the change in reliance on property taxes for school district revenues. Now we're going back down to school district revenue. This is the past 10 years. And what you can see is that that left bar, the largest one, is the change, the increase in reliance on local property taxes over the past 10 years. So this is kind of underscoring that. This problem is getting worse, is changing over time. We are continuing to rely more and more and more on local property taxes to fund our public education system. Next slide, please. This one is, there's a lot of numbers here. It's kind of hard to read. I apologize for that. What this is showing is property tax reliance as the driving force in what is almost a perfectly regressive tax structure here in New Hampshire. So you have income groups from left to right, going from the lowest income on the left to the highest income on the right. And the largest bar, that dark blue bar in the bottom, which is the largest of each of the categories, is property tax. Percent of income that goes to property taxes. What you can see is that the littlest percent are paying at or a little over 6% of their property towards property taxes. 6% of their income towards property taxes, excuse me. Well, on the right, top 1%, over, I think it's over $500,000 in income, are paying less than 2%. And so what you have is the amount of money that people are paying towards their property taxes. In general, folks making less money are paying a higher percentage of their property taxes. You might be wondering how that happens. And we'll get into that in a little bit. Next slide, please.
Go ahead, Dan.
So I'm listening to all the statistics, and they're all interesting. And I'm sitting here as a Goffstown School Board member. And I'm trying to understand what it is that I, as a Goffstown School Board member, can do about anything you've told us? That's, is that part of any of the presentation?
Yes.
Okay. I'd be excited to get there.
Yes. I appreciate that. And part of trying to give the state-level perspective is to show that once I get into the Goffstown numbers, the more regional numbers, that I didn't just cherry pick some numbers to make the point and that this is kind of a statewide issue.
Well, and we know all of this. This is nothing new to us. We do this every year. We have a budget. We know where the money comes from. We know where the revenue comes from. But we also know that it's our state legislators who would benefit most from this presentation if they were looking for information for that. So if my job as a school board member is to try to get to them to try to make something different, I don't think it's appropriate.
Are you saying, well, I guess what I'll say is this. I find, at least in the way we've done these presentations before, that not every school board member knows all this information and all this history. And so I apologize if, you know, parts of this are, I know some of this is-
We may not. I'm not speaking for the board. I'm speaking for me.
Yeah.
But I've known, because I've been doing this for 20 years.
Yeah.
So I might have an advantage from being on the budget committee for nine years and then being on the school board for another lots, 10 or 11. So, okay. I mean, I'd love to hear from my other board members, but sure, I don't want to slow down the presentation. Yeah. I'm trying to find out what is it I can do? What can I absorb out of this for right now to help me make a decision on school board items when we already have a budget, the money's there, and everything we've seen now? I don't think helps me make a decision.
That's a very fair and very good question. And I think part of what, I, I'm not a school board member. So what I'll answer that is how other school members have said they've found this helpful. And so, and when we've done this, something that we've heard has been helpful is that sometimes as school board members, it's hard to, you're the ones people come to when their property taxes go up. They see that school property tax rate, and they're like, what the heck? Why are you raising my taxes again? And so school members have found it helpful to understand the context, more of the context in which they're operating. So why are they only getting so much money from the state? Do other states do this? Why do we rely so heavily on the property taxes? Why are we in this bind where our only, or one of our only avenues is this taxes versus dollar for schools? And so that has been the context I think a lot of school members have found it helpful in. And, you know, and in these presentations, you know, other folks come, public and state legislature as well.
Well, we talked about that. And that's one of the reasons why we did this. No matter what, funding is funding. And we've got numbers. And whether the numbers come from here or they come from there, it's a shifting. And so basically, what I'm going to presume is something's going to come up to talk about shifting.
Yeah, it's all about who pays.
Okay.
And so part of this is laying the groundwork for currently who pays. And is that the way in which we should be doing it? And if not, what are some potential ways to shift that? Because you're right, budgeting is all about shifting. It's all about who pays and where.
Right. And the one thing that I'm going to be a proponent of is local control.
Yeah.
And I have found sometimes, when the funds come, and whenever we talk about federal funds in this board, there's always a question I ask, which is, what are the hooks?
Yeah.
And so if we shift it to a greater body, there's either going to be hooks or there's going to be potentially more of an expenditure. But it's good to enlighten. So I appreciate the basis for which I can continue to listen.
Yeah, and I'll respond to that, because that's another really good question we get a lot, and then we'll jump back into it, is that, you know, the idea of local control, I think, is also pretty subjective currently, because the state legislature every year passes additional things that school, school boards must do that oftentimes don't come with funding.
Oh, oftentimes? I would say it the other way. Oftentimes, rarely.
Yeah.
Come with any kind of funding.
Yeah.
It's just edicts.
Yeah, and so I understand that concern about, you know, if the state were to be providing a higher percentage of the dollars, what would happen with the amount of, but it's currently happening without any funding as well.
True.
So.
Okay.
Fair questions, though.
Thank you.
All right, go ahead, Scott.
All right, we'll keep rolling along. So this is just, again, kind of a quick zoom out to national perspective. We are an outlier. We rely the most heavily on property taxes to fund our schools in the country, period. Next slide, please. And the state provides the smallest share of funding for our public schools in the country. And that 31% is being generous. That's giving the state credit for the statewide education property tax, which, as I mentioned before, is a local property tax. It was originally enacted as a statewide tax, but that was changed about 10 years ago. So those two things, rely the most heavily on local property taxes, least amount of funding from the state as a percentage of total revenue. Next slide, please. So I'm just going to walk through a real quick equalized value for people. And this really is a measure that helps understand and compare communities to communities, and how, you know, we can compare Goffstown to Manchester to Concord to Belmont. What it is, is it's really showing the amount of property, taxable property value that's behind each student that could be taxed for their education. It's just a good way of thinking about the, basically the pool of money that's available to be taxed. Next slide, please. So a quick example is if, you know, the school district was looking to, at a $10,000 expenditure. If Goffstown's looking at that expenditure, it's probably going to be a similar amount that Manchester's looking at. You can't buy textbooks for significantly cheaper, you have similar expenses, you're operating kind of the same environment there. And so you have a property value of $1 million, you have a tax rate of $10 per thousand, you get your $10,000. But if the property value in a community is only $400,000, that same tax rate gets a much smaller amount of money raised. So in order to raise the same amount of money, next slide, please, you have to levy a tax rate that's two and a half times that of the community with a higher property value. Which wouldn't be an issue except that property value and number of students don't line up, obviously. I mean, the property wealth largely in this state follows natural resources, lakes, sea coast, ski mountains. And, you know, student population does not always follow that. And we have, you know, Manchester does not have a significant amount of sea coast property, obviously. So they don't really follow in line there. Next slide, please. So what this is showing is exactly the example I just put up there, the basic example. But these are all just data from Department of Education, Department of Revenue Administration, showing how this actually plays out in communities. So I'll just compare, you know, Goffstown to Portsmouth, for example, similar-sized student body. Portsmouth has the equalized value for people, so again, that amount of money behind each student, roughly, that can be taxed, property tax, that can be taxed to raise money for the student. As they have an equalized value for people of about 3.8 million, which means they can have an equalized school tax rate, so it's both swept and local $5.50, and raise about $21,000 per student. Goffstown, on the other hand, similar student body, but only $1.1 million in equalized value for people, has a tax rate twice as high, but raises 12,000 compared to Portsmouth's 21,000. And so this is kind of, you know, this goes back to this like layers of inequity. And it makes it challenging for communities with less property value. You're going to be the ones that get pinched a little bit more when you're talking about how to adjust tax rates or not, because there's less property value to rely on. Next slide, please. This is just that in visual form. And what this shows is that most students in the state, 74%, live in communities with below-average property values. This is not the only metric of school funding or a community's relative wealth. Absolutely. It is one metric, and it's helpful when looking at the community's relative ability to raise money for schools. Next slide, please. So one thing to compare real quick, just because I know I get talking about tax rates, and I can get a kind of, out there for some folks, is just kind of dollars out of your pocket. So we just looked at ZIL, looked at a bunch of housing, houses that were on the market about two years ago and last year, and just compared them, and what was the actual property tax dollars that were being paid based on the value of the home and the education property taxes at the time? Next slide, please. And so what you can see here is that comparing New London to New Boston, obviously, New London has some waterfront property with the lake up there, and so they have significantly higher property value in general, which allows them to have lower property taxes. The result being that a home that is not quite twice as expensive at the market price can have the same, almost the same, actually less, in their school property tax bill, the amount of money they're paying for their school property taxes. This plays out pretty much all over the state, not always as dramatically, but in general, property value does track, in general, with a community's ability to have lower tax rates. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Oh, this is, yeah, go ahead and hit a few of them. So this is just a quick, and then one more. So this is a quick, how is adequacy calculated? And this really also goes back to the Conval case, where looking at that base adequacy, which is that first number, so every student gets that amount. I'm preaching to the choir here. You add in all the differential aid pieces, so there's a formula that the Department of Education runs through, that each student gets a different amount, or each district gets a different amount, depending on how many students they have, eligible for introduced lunch, special education services, et cetera. And you get about $4,800 per student. Now, the kicker here is, next slide, please, is that this is nowhere near how much school districts spend on average. And one thing to relate back to the lawsuits, and there were, you know, a number of superintendents that testified throughout that too, trying to explain, as you all well know, that you don't just throw together budgets. You don't just, well, we'll spend something on this, and spend something on this, and not have discussions about, is this amount of money we're spending? Is this worth it? Why are we doing this? Could we be doing this a more efficient way? What are the students getting out of this? And yet, school districts, school boards, all over the state do that, right? And take, create a deal of pride and do a very good job doing that. And voters have input, whether directly or through electing you all, and we're still, you know, the average amount we're spending is, you know, about $20,000 per student. And yet, the state's only kicking in $4,800. And so again, this is showing that significant gap there. And part of the Conval suit was, effectively, the state trying to argue that that $4,800 was enough. And that enough and what is adequate is really what they're hinging on to try to pare that down to be almost meaningless. But the reality is, is that they're not providing anywhere close to how much it actually costs to run schools. Next slide, please. So we just did this little example to really show the absurdity of this, where we had a school district, Allenstown, take the budget that they had already passed and were working on, and say, what would you need to cut to get down to the amount of money the state gives you in adequacy funding? Which was cutting from a $12 million budget to a $2.4 million budget. And, you know, next slide, please. It's just an exercise in the absurd. They, you know, went through their full, you know, couple hundred line item budget, and just started cutting things, trying to keep just core teachers in the classroom, you know, just really that much as much as possible, cutting everything else, really kind of hitting at, effectively, what the state was arguing in Conval, which is, you know, they at one point said, do you really need an honors class? An honors English class? Is that adequate education? What would you save if you cut honors English and just offered English? Like, getting really into the minutia. Even if you cut all these things, many of these, by the way, which would violate federal, state law, and/or collective bargaining agreements, you couldn't even cut them if you wanted to. Next slide, please. There's significantly more cuts, food services, summer programs, technology support personnel, street crossing guards, one of the two nurses. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. So even after all of that hypothetical cuts, many of which just are flat-out illegal, the Allenstown school budget was still significantly higher than that's the adequacy amount. So they tuitioned their students into Pembroke Academy, and so they just, that's something that's outside of their immediate control there, was that tuition agreement, so they just cut that out. And if you hit the next key, please. So now, in Allenstown, in this example, they would stop paying for public education at eighth grade. K through four would have 29 students per teacher, five through eight would have 38 students per teacher. And again, an exercise in the absurd, definitely, but really trying to drive home. And I think part of why we do this is kind of the inverse of the question you were asking earlier, sir, is like, this helps show, I think, how much work school boards and others do to craft these budgets, and that there's not all of this just extraneous things that can be just cut to reduce the amount of funding. And a lot of thought and work goes into what's being provided for your students. Next slide, please. So a few other things to consider relative to kind of the impact here that that has, that the school funding system, as we have, has on other elements of both our schools and our society. So first off, is looking at some teacher salaries. As on the left here, we have teachers with a bachelor's, this is their, you know, starting teacher salaries. And teachers on the, on the right is a teacher's master's. And what you can see is a pretty dramatic difference from Dover to Portsmouth. It's almost a $10,000 difference in your, in your starting salary. And while this is not always a one-to-one for property value or relative need, it tracks pretty closely. And the same with the master's. And so, you know, we hear a lot of school districts that have lower property value, that have, you know, higher taxes, that are really squeezed and have tighter budgets, that they basically serve as training grounds for other districts. Newport will hire a teacher, they'll be there for two or three years, and then they'll move to Lyme, or New London, or Sunapee, where they can make $10,000, $15,000, $20,000 more, and be working in a school that has significantly more resources. It's hard to blame them, right? And so that is something that is just a really direct impact. And again, not always directly linked to just property values, but there's a strong correlation there. Next slide, please. Another piece that we like to kind of point out is that, as a state-level policy, which all of the school funding is state-level policy. It's, could be changed, there's talks about changing it this year, it could be increased, decreased, shifted around. But it really does not help economically make specific communities on the same playing field. If we have a state policy that by compounding and downshifting these costs really forces communities like Berlin and others to have higher tax rates, it makes it less likely that businesses are going to go there. Is that the only reason? Of course not, right? But if you're going to pay five times the amount in local property taxes, largely driven by school taxes, to go from community A to community B, that's a serious consideration for anyone looking to open a business there. And a lot of times, communities try to encourage economic development as a way to expand their taxable property base and grow the, you know, grow the community. And so as a state-level policy, we think this is doing the exact opposite of that. Next slide, please. Another piece that this system really stresses and puts tension on is regional school districts, proper districts. We just pulled out Timberland here as an example. But you have communities that are, you know, sending their students to the same high school, that are paying dramatically different tax rates. And, you know, they might have their own elementary or middle schools, but same high school. And so, you know, a tax on a $300,000 home, and this one school district ranges from $4,700 to $2,800 in your local property tax. And their kids are going to the same exact high school, access to the same exact classes. And we see this a lot where there's these tensions of a community wanting to pull out or feeling like they're being pushed out because of the amount that they're paying or not. And regional school districts provide a significant opportunity and collaboration for students, for teachers. There's tons of benefits there. And so have a system that almost by definition makes that more challenging, just does not seem correct. Next slide, please. Ooh, that is hard to read. What is, this is showing is we've spent the past year or so basically compiling a ton of data on just different metrics, just looking at, is this a correlation to school funding? Sometimes it's not, sometimes it is. Does this relate to local property taxes? Sometimes it does, sometimes it doesn't. But what we've seen is, to the state averages for a number of metrics up there, post-secondary enrollment, number of sports, AP tests, I know the AP test just wrapped up. And we just looked at Goffstown, and, you know, all the greens just showed that, you know, kind of above average, and... What this shows is we've seen that, again, not a one-for-one, right? But some of the communities that struggle the most, also on some of these output metrics, really struggle. And it makes sense, you start stacking all of these things up, it's going to make it harder for specific school districts to provide everything that they can for their students. Next slide, please. So this is just the same chart that was shown at the beginning, kind of a reminder, what's the, what's the significant underlying problem? It says 70% of school funding comes from local property taxes. Next slide. And so to put a price tag on it, it's about $2.3 billion a year. It's currently being raised and spent by local property taxes on public schools in New Hampshire. Depending how you read the Claremont decisions, the entirety of that should be the responsibility of the state. $2.3 billion is a lot of money, especially relative to the state budget. You can't just add that on in one go, but to put a price tag on it, and, you know, depending on the rulings that are coming out of the courts right now, that might be put back up to the state and say, this is your responsibility. Whether it's going to be to pay for every single dollar that school districts are spending, probably unlikely, right? Next slide, please. But the simplistic answer, if you will, is that that should be the responsibility of the state. Again, I'm not naive enough to think that we're going to increase our state budget by, I'm not sure what percent that would be, but a massive percent, and just say the state should pay for all of this. But the point is, is that who is paying is really important here. Currently, who is paying primarily local property taxpayers with wildly different rates across the state? If the state were to take more responsibility for that, it could be done in a way that could help relieve that burden for people in specific communities. That's exactly what happened in the House of Representatives about a month ago, when they passed their budget, is they increased some targeted aid to try to take into account community's relative ability to raise those funds. Next slide, please. This is a quote from the Commission to Study School Funding that met throughout 2020. And they met for a full year as a commission, a legislative commission, they had some outside experts as well, and they spent a significant amount of time and money looking at this whole issue. And basically, the punchline was, yes, it's very inequitable, and the communities that can't afford it pay the most and have the highest percentage of students with higher need. Next slide, please. This is just a little recap of the state budget, what has currently happened. There's been some proposals, the governor proposed some changes, the House Finance Committee proposed some changes. The House changed it pretty dramatically in their full vote on the floor. It's currently in the Senate. And I just want to underscore here again that, I guess it kind of goes back to some of the questions that were raised earlier, is that the, where this gets solved or not is at the state level. But part of that is also people understanding and knowing that, and understanding where those different levels of responsibility and ability to make changes lie. Next slide, please. And so we always get this question, okay, great, so you've outlined the problem, you showed us that it's, you know, inequitable in your view. What's your answer? How are you going to fix it? Who's going to pay for it, right? I don't have a single silver bullet answer that's going to fix everything. But there are a lot of different options, right? There's currently, I believe, the interest and dividends tax was just voted on the House to be phased out. That's a significant source of revenue. Folks that pay that, in general, have significantly more wealth. That's a decision that's being made, right? Agree with it or disagree with it, that's a revenue decision, about $150 million to the state each year that we will no longer have in a year. Could we direct that towards school funding? We have business taxes that we have increased or decreased over the years. Other states use income taxes and sales taxes. I grew up in New Hampshire, I understand that those are incredibly unpopular, right? But they are taxes that other states use. How much would they raise? Who would pay? How much do people actually not want? We don't even talk about the fact that they exist, right? And another piece is the true statewide property tax. And that about $10 per thousand is just rough math, all the property in the state, total amount of money spent on public education, what would be the local, the property tax rate that would wipe out your local education rate and state rates? Everyone would pay the same, be about $10 per thousand. That definitely means some people would pay more, some people would pay less, right? But who pays and how? And that's where, you know, do we have tax exemptions for folks that can't afford it, who are living on fixed incomes, who are in a single family as opposed to, is their second residence? And part of it, you know, as an organization, what we try to do is do these presentations and encourage these conversations. We might have some ideas, representatives might have some ideas, community members might have some ideas, but we need to be addressing this and working towards it, because it is continuing to get worse. Next slide, please.
Can I just jump in quickly?
That's the end, so...
Good timing, then.
Yes, this is the summary of things we've run through.
Can we just let him finish, and then you can ask?
Yes, so this is just a general summary of kind of everything we've run through. I know I've been going pretty quick, I hope this has been helpful. I'm down to answer as many questions as I can. I don't always know the answer, so I'll do my best and get back to you. Yeah, we have materials, and I'm happy to stay after and answer questions outside if we don't get to them all.
Great, thank you, Zach. Go ahead, Nicole.
I don't know if it's easy to go back to that slide, but I often get the question and hear the comment, okay, if we pay it locally versus we pay it at the state level, it's all going to be the same amount of money out of my pocket, so why does it matter? Can you maybe answer sort of why that is as it relates to what we were just talking about?
Yeah, so I guess a short answer is, it might not be, it doesn't have to be the same amount. And so, for example, if we were to do that $10 per thousand, I believe Goffstown's tax rate was a little higher than that. So in theory, right, if you're, and again, like, I can't control the legislative process. So if we were to have a tax rate of $10 per thousand, I can't guarantee you sitting here that that would mean your tax rate would absolutely go down, right? That's the ideal, but there's a whole process to go through.
But for the communities that are paying exceptionally high property taxes due to education funding, that would likely reduce their property taxes.
That would be the goal. And as we've seen, just I passed the House recently, that's, that's the intent. That's the understa, the more current understanding is that when you have more of those findings, you target to the communities that already have the really high tax rates.
Thank you.
You all set, Nicole?
Yes, thank you.
Thanks. Go ahead, Scott.
For those who don't know me, I'm Scott Rosen, the Business Administrator for Goffstown in New Boston. And I don't have copies for everybody, but Representative Alexander, you can just pass those around. New Boston School Board members, I gave one. But in this, there, the positives out of this is that both the House and the governor have proposed increases to adequacy for FY '24 and FY '25. So I want to kind of highlight that. So I know that we're talking, it's, you know, kind of dim in terms of the news, right?
Fair enough, yeah, fair enough.
But I want to put some context to this, all right? So in both the House plan and the governor's budget, it would be about $1 million more in adequacy for Goffstown and FY '24 from current levels, all right? Good thing, right? Now, again, I'm the spreadsheet guy, so...
Go for it.
In 2004, Goffstown received inadequacy $9.8 million, okay? In 2024, you can look at that sheet, we are budgeted to get 10.9, all right? What that means, folks, is that that is a half of a percent increase in adequacy over 19 years. One half of a percent in adequacy, but the Goffstown budget is increasing on average 3% over that same period. So had adequacy gone up consistent with the budget, consistent with the- So had adequacy gone up consistent with the budget, consistent with the local property tax, et cetera, we probably wouldn't be in this dire, I mean, kind of dire situation. So again, I put that, you know, just, you know, in context so that our budgets, by and large, and our impact on the taxpayer is going up two and a half, sometimes 3.2, right around there every year, but yet the adequacy piece is only 0.5. So I was super encouraged, you know, so Joe texted me this, and I'm like, oh my God, this is, this is great, it's a step in the right direction. So I wanna at least acknowledge that it looks like, again, trying to stay nonpartisan here, like, both parties, people are starting to recognize that this is an issue, we gotta try to, you know, we're not gonna fix it overnight, like you said, but I was super encouraged when Joe sent that over because I think it's a really, it's a, it's a good starting spot, you know? Now whether that amount needs to be three, four, five times that amount, that needs to be, that remains to be seen, but at least there's movement. That's more. $1 million is the same amount in one year than it was over 23 years correctly. So just to put that in perspective.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's a leaps and bounds difference, and it's a step in the right direction. So I just wanted to acknowledge that.
Thank you, Scott.
I really appreciate that you brought that up because we get a lot of, you know, it is pretty grim, and so I'm always trying to not be so, you know, so much of a downer, but a little, just tie a bit more context on that, which I think is important, is that of the three proposals that have happened so far, which is the governor's, House Finance, and what actually passed the House, each were pretty different. And the one, you know, the governors and House Finance also had increases, but they phased out targeted aid, stabilization aid, over 10 years, that would have reduced need-based aid to some of the highest need communities by $1.3 billion over the next 10 years. The House didn't adopt that, they, you know, they removed that elimination, so stabilization's staying in, and they reduced the kind of the base adequacy increase a little bit. But they chose to target, you know, make sure everyone got a little bump, and then target some of the more funding to the communities that need it most. And so it's kind of, it's always in flux, but everyone is, you know, I appreciate bringing that because everyone is thinking in that direction, it'll remain to be seen what happens in the Senate. But yeah, I very much appreciate you bringing that up.
Does anybody have, Fred? Anyone should come up to the microphone, I know we all know you, but if you could just say your name and address for the record, that'd be great.
Yes, I'm Representative Fred Platt, and I've been listening, I can't see anything up there, but I've been listening, it's too blurred.
Yeah.
So I hope to see it later, more clearly. But the impetus, the thrust of this conversation is that property taxes are unfair, too much burden from property taxes. But the state has limited funds, we have to balance the budget as a state, we can't print money like the federal government does. So, and every tax we impose is involuntary. So we have, whether it's swept, or it's an income, an income tax, an interest in dividends, if it's a real estate transfer tax, rooms and meals tax, they're all taken out of people's pockets involuntarily. And so this, this question is, what's fair? You tell me what's fair. I see, I see the pressure on the schools, everything isn't perfect with the swept. One thing I don't particularly care for is that the people who have less education need than the property taxes they pay in swept get to keep the difference. And that's a few years, several years ago, there was a lot of talk about donor towns, how unpopular that was, so you can do what's politically possible. We are, right in the state, I recognize there's a real concern, but there are many other concerns, without helping human services and several other needs facing the state capital construction and roads, that's all I can say. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Fred. Is there any other questions, comments from any of our state reps? Go ahead, Joe, just state your name, please.
Joe Alexander, Oakwood Lane, I want to thank you for inviting me to this, it's been very informative, thank you. I see state solutions, correct me if I'm wrong, financial transactions tax, income tax, sales tax, reinstituting the IND or like, the elderly tax, the tax on the elderly that had all this wealth, and then they're gonna get taxed when they try to pull it from retirement. So I see solutions, but it's like increasing taxes, and I guess I want to challenge the school board, I'm one member of the Budget Committee, I do not speak for the Budget Committee, but I challenge the school board to send us a budget that is pared down, lower, or balanced, or lower than before, and I will work on the state level. I mean, Scott pointed out very eloquently that we are compromising like we never have before on school funding, both parties, and I think that, you know, the local school board, I challenge you to send us a budget that is maybe less than the year before. But the things that we run into are collective bargaining, there's a lot of things on the local level that are decided that the state can help fund, but it's local decisions, and I'm totally supportive of having you make those decisions. So with that, thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Anyone else? Go ahead, Jenny.
I know we're talking about school funding right now, but I know as far as, as Goffstown is going now, a lot of our, our school funding money is spent because we don't have building aid. And so a lot of our budget money is going into portable classrooms and different things that we have to do because we have no building aid and we have needs to increase spaces for students. We have no full-day kindergarten because we need to build, and we don't have any building aid in New Hampshire to be able to build. So a lot of the money that we're spending in our budgets every year is stuff that if we have building aid, we could do some planning and take some of those costs out of our budget every year. So I'm wondering, besides school funding, what is happening about building aid?
It's a really good question. So currently, in the current legislative session, you know, when the governor proposed his budget, he proposed a significant increase in building aid, I'm forgetting the exact number off the top of my head, but a lot more than is currently being paid out. There is also bills from the Chair of the House Education Committee, who's a Republican, a Democrat on the Finance Committee, another Democrat on, I forget which committee, but like, my point being bipartisan bills to increase some more than others, the amount of building aid for this exact reason. And a lot of times, you know, building aid can be, you know, one, one-time expenses, right? It's like helping get a project done. That was not, to my knowledge, kept in the House-passed budget, and instead the decision was made with the surplus in the Education Trust Fund to basically move that surplus into the General Fund. So again, it's still in the process, but those are decisions that are being weighed, whether or not to increase building aid, decrease it, move it out of the Education Trust Fund entirely. So I guess the answer being, yeah, it's a serious, that's another serious piece of the puzzle. And yes, the state has limited money, but there are decisions, you know, that are being weighed in either direction that would have dramatic impacts on that.
You all set, Jenny?
Yep.
All right. Anyone else? Jared, did you have your hand up?
I just have a quick...
Go ahead, Nicole.
Just a quick comment in response to reducing budgets, I just want to make it clear that our state average to educate per pupil is about $20,000. As you pointed out, Goffstown is already running extremely lean at about $16,000 per pupil, so just wanted to make sure people were aware of that.
Thank you, Nicole. Any other state reps question? Oh, go ahead, Jared.
Just a question, Mr. Chair, because we do have the state reps here, and I know that we have kind of some thoughts to share with them. Is this the appropriate form to do that now, or is there another part of the agenda? Because I do not see it listed on the agenda.
To discuss what with the state reps?
Whatever we wish to discuss with them, or questions we have.
Yeah, that wasn't for tonight.
That wasn't, okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Is there any other questions? I can take a couple more. Go ahead, Lisa, come on up.
I just have a very, very quick question.
Yeah, go ahead.
People can't hear you unless you're on the line.
Sorry, we can hear you, but people watching can't.
All right.
My name is Lisa, Representative Lisa Mazur, still not used to saying that, because I am a freshman. But just very quick question, thank you for your presentation tonight, and thank you for taking my question. And it is a very, very quick one. So where do you, as an organization, receive your funding from?
Yeah, so we're a nonprofit organization, so A, our tax filings are all public, we get some support from the charitable foundation, real foundations, and then we do, you know, fundraising like every other nonprofit.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Any New Boston Board members have any questions or comments? Go ahead, Ellen.
I haven't heard anybody come up with any ideas for a solution.
Right.
Someone said, cut your budget. Excuse me, we're already well below the state average, and we do a pretty darn good job here in Goffstown of educating our children, okay? We do a good job with it and have for many years, but I'm not hearing anybody come up with any kind of solution. This, we all agree, putting the burden of, on the local property taxpayers is wrong, and it's unfair to anybody. I'd like to see our reps start brainstorming, coming up with, I know it would be very difficult and probably not very popular, but answers need to be come up with by brave people who are going to do something about this. The local property taxes throughout the state are ridiculous, and I come from a state where property taxes are so high we came here, for lower property, and it's still low from where I came from. But I'm not hearing solutions, I'm not hearing suggestions. We know there's a problem, and I really wish our reps would get together and start making a difference for all of Goffstown today, not five years from now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen. All right, so is there any other questions for any of our state reps or board members? Oh, Joe, go ahead.
I would just, just briefly comment, solutions that I've heard are income tax, sales tax, reinstituting interest and dividends. So unfortunately, those are really not very politically viable options right now.
I didn't say they would.
So I would just say that I'm happy to entertain those, if you'd like. Please email me or give me a phone call, and I'm happy to entertain them, but I don't think they're politically feasible at this time, so that's all.
Thank you, Joe. Scott, I saw your hand up.
Hey, I only get one shot when I have Senator Murphy and I think all of our state reps here, so I'm gonna wing it and just indulge me for a minute. RSA 198:19, and I'll print off a copy of it for, I'll email it to you, it's called Area School Aid, it's on the books, and this was passed in 1969, right? I'll read it. "As an incentive to receiving and sending districts which undertake the obligations of an area school such as Goffstown, the State Board shall," not may, not will, "shall, from funds appropriated by the General Court to carry out provisions of this chapter," the chapter is school money, "pay annually to each receiving district which is Goffstown, sums in accordance with the following schedule: For each pupil from the sending district, an average daily membership in the preceding year; in an elementary school, $45; in a junior high school or middle school, $60; in an area school, $75." So the law's on the books, the state hasn't funded it, so to me, that's not great. It's about $36,000 a year, probably should have gotten this over the last 20 years or forever, but thank you, Joe, because Joe made me look at RSAs at nine o'clock at night one night, and I came across this old thing, so I credit Joe Alexander. "As of June 30th, in each year, the State Board shall cause to be computed the grants, et cetera." And when I sent this off to the state, the State Board pointed the fingers back to the legislature, saying, why aren't you funding this? So my question is, is that either fund it, put it in your budget, or strike it from the law. Thank you, and that was all I had."
Thank you, Scott, appreciate it. Okay, go ahead, Jenny, last question.
This is kind of a crazy question, but back in the day when the lottery started in New Hampshire, it was my understanding that it was started for education. I know everyone was buying their ticket because, oh, we can, you know, buy a dollar, a $5 ticket because it goes to education, you know, if we win money, that'd be awesome, but it goes to education. So now I notice that 4% of that goes to education. What happened in the meantime that now all of a sudden that has gone down to 4% when it has started as an education fund to begin with?
I don't know the change in, so that was 4%, it was 4% of the total money, revenue for public education came from the lottery, not just 4%. I don't have the lottery numbers off the top of my head to know, like, if the percentage of money that they give to education has changed over time. I do know they've given about $2 billion to education in the past 25 years or so. So a good amount of money, but, you know, that's how much local property taxpayers pay in a year. So I don't know the rate, like, if it's changed over time, but it is significantly less than people generally pay.
Was I mistaken that it wasn't started for education?
I think Senator Murphy might have a more specific answer.
Hi.
Hello.
Senator Keith Murphy. The state constitution requires that all lottery profits go to education, so it doesn't go anywhere else. I believe a tiny bit is siphoned off for problem gambling, and that counts as education, but all lottery revenues after expenses go towards education. And I, if I, well, since I'm sitting here...
Yes.
Listening to the whole, the whole thing. My, my two cents, and I know that everyone here works hard to educate the kids in this town, and for New Boston. You know, I moved here 20 years ago because I wanted to live somewhere where it was a great place to raise a family. And regardless of the fact that we're having difficulties maybe raising the money to fund this priority and that priority, and these are important things, we do a great job as a state. This is, I've lived in other states, this is the best state in the country I've ever been in. We have incredible schools, we have the safest state in the country to raise kids, the cleanest state in the country, maybe tied with Vermont, we have the highest median incomes in the country. So while we're, I don't want to beat people up or be beat up, but I just think that we're very successful as people at what we do. And, you know, everybody up here, the reps behind me, we make $100 a year, we're not doing this for the money or the license plate. I promise, the EZ Pass isn't enough, you know? So anyway, I just wanted to chime in with my two cents, and I hope it answered your question, and since I'm here, if anybody has any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, so I think we've gotten everybody. Thank you, Zach, very much, and Noah, I know you're in the sideline here. Coming out tonight, I appreciate all the state reps, New Boston School Board, thank you guys for coming. You're more than welcome to stay and listen to the rest of our board meeting, but if you do choose to leave, we ask you to do it quickly and quietly because we still are on TV, and you can sit outside if you have questions for Zach or the Senator.
Yeah, thank you, thank you so much, and thank you for having me, really appreciate it.
Thank you, Zach.
We do a very good job too, and we don't get license plates. How does that work?
Okay. You want a license plate? Thank you. Hi. Hi, thank you.
Hey, Bill.
Hi, thanks for coming. All right, bye, Bill. Thank you for coming, goodbye. All right, so we're gonna continue on, the next is the approval of April 17th, School Board Meeting Minutes. Did everybody have a chance to take a look? Anybody seen anything?
I have a quick question about the minutes. It's, I know it's run a different page, but it's way back at the end about the field trip request, and not to belabor this point, but I think we agreed that we would get a list. It only says that, Brian, you would bring it to the principals, so if we didn't agree on that, I would just love to bring it back up and officially agree on getting a list of those field trips by grade. If we already agreed on that, I'd love the minutes to reflect that, please.
So what is it exactly that the board wants me to do? You want me to bring a list of every field trip that we've gone on?
I think we had agreed at the past two meetings, Ellen and Jenny had requested the list, and we had agreed, you said you would bring it to the principals, but it was not on the minutes that we will actually get it, so just thought that the minutes should reflect that.
Do you remember that?
I remember discussing it.
I remember.
I'm not entirely, I guess I would ask the board to be really clear what you're asking me to do.
Yeah.
So you want a list by school of every field trip that the school has been on this year?
By grade.
Can we do it during new business rather than the minutes, unless we're trying to amend the minutes? Did you intend to amend?
Yes, my, my question was, I thought we had agreed on this, so I was requesting that it be in the minutes.
What page?
I won't be able to vote on that because I don't remember it specifically.
I think it's the last page, right? It was other business.
actually get it. So just thought that the minutes should reflect that.
Thank you. Do you remember that?
I remember discussing it.
Yeah.
I'm not entirely... I guess I would ask the board to be really clear what you're asking me to do.
Yeah.
So you want a list by school of every field trip that the school has been on this year?
Can we do it during new business rather than the minutes unless we're trying to amend the minutes? Did you intend to amend?
Yes, my question was, I thought we had agreed on this, so I was requesting that it be in the minutes.
What page?
I won't be able to vote on that because I don't remember it specifically.
I think it's the last page, right? It was other business.
If we haven't agreed on it in the past, then that's fine. We'll discuss it as different business.
We didn't motion on it, no.
I'll make a motion then when it's time.
Okay, that's all I had on the minutes.
All right. All right, so what are we doing?
We did have consensus that it would happen, no.
During new business, we could ask for it?
Yeah, why don't we do that?
Yeah, I just... It was Alan and Ginny, and I thought that there was consensus.
Yeah, I know we talked about, but we didn't make motions or... We just asked for...
Asked for it to be done.
For field trips for the schools to make sure he was talking to the principals. Did you want us to ask about all the field trips? I didn't understand that.
Yeah, that was my intention, that we know what was going on, yeah.
Yeah, that was mine, too, request by grade level what the trips, when the kids were going.
Why?
Shane.
Help me understand why.
Because we're getting calls from parents.
Who? I... Well, I would encourage parents to call me. There are zero field trips that I have denied. Zero. There's not a single field trip that any principal has asked to go on that we have not honored, so...
Brian, I don't think... I don't think that's the point.
But I want the board to realize, I'm happy to get you your list, but I don't want anyone to think that I'm denying field trips.
That's been very clear, yeah.
Yeah, Shane, that's not the issue.
That was the conversation I remember.
Yes, that's the one I remember. Go ahead, Shane.
I would just remind the board that it's not our role to micromanage our administrators or our schools, and that compiling this information is labor-intensive.
Yeah.
To a staff that's already under plenty of strain labor-wise. I'm not opposed to it, but I think we should also consider those facts.
Thank you, Shane. I appreciate that, especially at this time of year. Go ahead, Joe.
Question to approve the minutes as presented.
Thank you. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
By Caroline. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? I... We're unanimous. All right, so committee reports. A and F.
A and F met this evening at 6 o'clock, and we get all our business done within 45 minutes. That was great. We have a lot that is going on. The first thing that I would like to do, we have two manifests, I'd like to do them one at a time, so I'll offer a motion that we approve a manifest dated May 1st of a total value of $1,227,481.77.
Thank you, Dan. Bye, I have a second. Bye, Alan, go ahead, Dan.
That would be the blue sheet. That would be in your packet. We have payroll taxes, benefits, and related, $886,668. Some special education, $5,000 and over. The Durham School Services, that's in and out of district transportation and monitors, $78,000 and change. Mount Prospect Academy for out of district for the month of March, $6,200. Johnson ABA Consulting, some sped contracted services for April, around $8,200. So it's a... Not a big over amount. General expenses, we have $89,500 for Goffstown Truck Center. That's the regular education, athletic, co-curricular and transportation. Uncle Barry's Carpentry, that's the press box. That is, I think, the first floor is already up, $32,500. Dead River Company for propane, $10,845. GovConnect, which is for iPads and software, $10,400. Eversource for power, $7,300. The YMCA for the pool rental and gymnastic, $6,800. Apple for some, I believe, their iPads and supplies, $55,79.50. Amazon, book supplies, $54,73. And then we bought some food, $16,706.
Thank you, Dan. Anybody have any questions? Go ahead, Jared.
Uncle Barry's Carpentry. Is that coming out of the general fund or is that being funded through other means?
I believe that was the money that we got from the...
Donation.
Whole donation.
Thank you.
We actually... Did we talk about the... I thought on April 17th, we may have... We talked about it at A and F. I don't know if it went to the full committee back in April. Sorry.
If... I know that we've received a ton of donations for a lot of our projects, which is awesome.
He was the lowest, by far, bidder.
I just think it's helpful to remind the staff that, yes, we receive these through donations. And just to remind us that these are general expenses. We're not spending $32,000 of our operating budget.
Right.
This came from a donation. Several donations we received, and we're very thankful for them.
Absolutely. Good point. I thank you for bringing it in.
Any other questions or comments for Dan or Scott? All right, so I have a motion. I have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? We're unanimous.
I have a larger manifest dated May 15th, and I would like to propose a motion that we approve that manifest in the amount of $2,940,351.97.
Thank you. Bye, Alan. Go ahead, Dan.
Payroll taxes, those kind of items, $1.2 million. Sped activity, Bedford School District, that's an out-of-district placement for semester two, $23,721. The Nashua School District, again, out-of-district for semester two, $18,339. The Birch Tree Center, out-of-district. These are all gonna be out-of-district. So various months and semesters. Birch Tree is 12, 239 for May. Crest Collaborative, April, $11,528. Nashua Children's, May, for $69,86. And the Home for Little Wanderers, March, $67,39. And you notice the months are all over the place. That has to do with them billing us. When do they bill us? They invoice us, we pay it. And so we're not behind, we're not ahead. It's whenever there's any invoices. General expenses, Field Turf USA. Are you ready? This is a donation, $533,216.20. And from what I understand, if you go out behind the school here and take a look, we have artificial grass. We call it turf. SAU 19, the May Assessment, $141,069. Energy Management Controls, that's the GHS Theater renovation lighting project that we started, $41,995. We're getting it ready to go. That'll be during the summer. The Home Depot Pro, which are custodial supplies and equipment, $33,559. Eversource for Power, $25,218. Blue and Services, HVAC, Preventive Maintenance. Of course, it's written preventative maintenance, but $23,814. Brian Fournier Landscaping for the irrigation mainline relocation, $21,542. And I believe that was because the... It's part of the whole turf thing and the moving of the... What we're doing in the project. Goffstown Truck Center, Athletics, Kindergarten, Late Bus, $19,093. Dead River Company, $13,378 for propane. Johnny Neville Excavating, that's part of the renovation project, some site work, $13,080. Our Quarterly Copier Lease to Xerox is $12,477. Klenorama Facility Supplies, $10,994. Amazon School Supplies, Equipment Books, $85,64. Citywide Facility, if you remember, we don't have a full complement of janitorial. This is Janitorial Services for 8100. Hellmac Industries, $79,25 for the access controls. We have some grant money that was being spent on that. Creative Vision Flooring, Mountain View, we had a couple of classrooms where some tiles were not behaving. That was a $6,000 floor expense. Panda Dock, as you know, we're doing a lot of more signatures. Instead of paper going back and forth, we're doing it electronically. This is $65,93. Performance Food was $63,54.
Thank you, Dan. Does anybody have any questions or comments for Dan or Scott? Okay, seeing none. We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? We're unanimous. Thank you, Dan.
We've got a couple of other things that we talked about tonight. Scott's gonna go over them with us as he is well-informed of what he's asking for.
All right. First on from your agenda was the School District CIP Matrix. And I sent that over to you on Saturday. So I want to preface this by saying that this is due by Monday... Next Monday, so to the town. And then the Town's Planning Department will start this process. Alan is our CIP rep, and that's gonna start, I think, in the first or second week of June. We, the school district, our proposal, our presentation is in the latter part of June. With that being said, with the time constraints that we are under, it's my recommendation that I'm going to submit these to the town. There'll be... There's... There are over 100 CIP items that are on there. I'm gonna touch upon a few highlights for you, but the thought process is, is that we'll submit all of them. If at either your next meeting or at your school board retreat, there's anything that you want to see, you want to pull off, we'll pull that back. We'll let Alan know. We just won't present it in late June. But the timing of when this is through to the town and all the things that are going on, you know, we pretty much put everything, you know, in there. So in terms of highlights, what you're going to see is that this is the largest CIP ever in terms of what I have ever presented. In the last year of the CIP, I put in a placeholder for $60 million for a new middle school. Again, you'll be discussing this at your retreat. I also put in $7.5 million for a renovations to or an addition onto your Glen Lake Kindergarten School. Whether or not, what I just said, the middle school becomes an elementary school, the price tag will go down, but I put in the worst case, okay? But I wanted something on there because we have been talking about, you know, the need for schools and whether it's an elementary school, whether it's a middle school, it's on there as the worst-case scenario. The most expensive school to construct would be a middle school. There are advantages in that in the case of, say, New Boston, because we do tuition kids in from New Boston, so there would be an additional revenue for that. Also, it would put us higher on the criteria list for building aid if you're satisfying, you know, two different communities. So that's one of the big things that's on there. The other thing that you'll see that's on there is we have lumped together a lot of projects into two years. So next year, so when we go on the March ballot, you'll see that there are quite a few projects that are lumped together, what one would consider a lease purchase. So the law allows us to put forward lease purchase agreements and put them on the ballot. The voters have to approve them, but the threshold for that is 50%. And you can only do that on things like replacing things like air conditioning units, air handlers, IT equipment, things with more of a shorter lifespan. So you'll see that on there. And then the second thing that you're gonna see is in the following year, there is what's called, there's a bond. That bond would be, I would probably call it a district-wide school renovation bond. We have parking lots and roadways. I look at Mountain View as a great example. I mean, it's over, it's about 30 years old. We have to really redo all of the parking lots and the roadways. That's quite a bit of money. We have flooring, we have roofs, we have a lot of things that wouldn't fit under a lease type of an agreement, so all of those are in there. Again, all of them, in my opinion, are, I put everything that we could think of. And I say aye, it's not I, it's we. Randy, myself, Steve, the superintendent, we put everything in there. We can peel back, but no one is gonna say that we didn't put anything on there that wasn't asked for at any point over the last four or five years. So example, we talked about a theater addition for storage. That was kind of put on the back burner over the... Like, over the last year or two because of the cost. I put it on there. We'll peel it off, but I just wanted to put more or less the worst financial case, you know, on that. This is by far the most items that we have put on there. Part of it was because we thought that it would be beneficial to put as much as we can so that we are planning for pretty much anything. So that includes any things from an in-building electrical transformer at Mountain View Middle School, it's to playground equipment, you name it, it's kinda in there. And it does show that we are, what we're thinking about in terms of all of our future expenses. So it's millions upon millions upon millions of dollars, but what it demonstrates is that our current way of trying to do things is, it's gonna be extremely difficult, if not impossible. There's just too much to do. And I would liken it to, we're at a point now where, from a local homeowner perspective, we need to take out a home equity line to start to do the roof and things around our houses. We can't just do it by chipping away and spending $2,000 or $3,000 a year on this appliance, that appliance. Everything is so... It's getting aged, and we have to think differently about this. We'll talk more June 5th, we'll talk more at the retreat. But again, I've... This town wants this by next week, so we have to give them, and then we can peel it back. So we're all good on that one. You could have time now to look at it and then let Alan and myself know, and then we'll talk about it over the next two meetings.
Thank you, Scott. Go ahead, Alan.
Just real quick, there are some boxes that are red.
Yeah, red means that we couldn't... We did not do it. So access controls is one of them. What that means is that because I felt that access controls could be part of either a municipal lease or a bond, I moved it to those years. But I just wanted you to... Those... We have certain things on this CIP that we have done, Alan. There's certain things that we have not done.
And we did not do, so you moved it out. I see. And what about the green ones?
Green ones are the ones that we have done. So also, what I wanted to let you know is, we're not gonna discuss it, but we have what's called a mini CIP coined by Alan. These are all the things that are under the $25,000 threshold. And again, pages upon pages of that. Randy and Stephen have just done a phenomenal job of listing out everything that we need from, you know, that is under that $25,000 threshold. And then last but not least, Stephen and I put together a list of software that we are... That we are using day in and day out. Again, that's just to demonstrate that we have approximately $300,000 in either software or software as a service to run our school district on an annual basis. So we have to factor that into our budgets, but again, we felt that it would be important for the board and the community to see that whether it's antivirus software. In case you didn't know, Nashua, about two weeks ago, got hacked. It's happening more and more in New Hampshire. So things, we have to have that IT security as part of our... Just the way that we do our business. So I tried to give the board and the community, like, this is the sense of the true dollars, and we really can't duck it. You know, it's there. Now, yes, we can defer, yes, we can ignore, but on certain things, we cannot duck it. So it's there, and the purpose of all this is really for your retreat. You know, when we talk about ways of funding some of these things, the board may decide to take a look at this CIP or some of these items, say, "You know what? We are not doing these items." That's all fair. I appreciate all that, and we'll take it off those lists. But it's all the things that have been mentioned by administration or others over the last three, four years. And Ginny, I'm looking at you because you always ask us during budget season, you know, what was asked for. We went around to every principal, and we asked them, "What are some of the things?" So you're gonna... You saw, everything is on there.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Scott. So board members, be prepared to come back June 5th with us.
Okay.
Yep, go on to the next one.
Next one is, you have a memo in front of you for the replacement of our tractor. Our tractor is about 18 to 19 years old at this point. Our tractor is about 18 to 19 years old at this point. It has been experiencing issues over the last couple of years. It does not have any midgear. That is no longer working. I asked Randy to let me know the hours. I don't even know the hours in this machine because that thing is no longer working. So it was scheduled for 2023 to be replaced. I was going to put this on your June 5th agenda. Randy went to a local distributor of Kubota. Kubota is what is used by, is the tractor that Parks and Rec has. And Randy, myself, met with Rick Willhelmy, the Parks and Rec director, to determine what they use for their equipment. In case some of you don't know, Parks and Rec takes care of many of our fields, and there's a tremendous partnership there. And we were thinking about having the same exact tractor as Parks and Rec so that we could share expertise, parts, maintenance parts, attachments if necessary, et cetera, seemed to make sense. Also, because we use Sourcewell as our purchasing cooperative, Kubota offers a discount there. So Randy was getting the pricing, and when he was there, we became aware of a used tractor at this distributor. So the tractor with the attachments that we priced out was over $80,000. The used tractor only has 94 hours on it. It was a gentleman, a single owner, who upgrades every two to three years, and I guess, so that tractor is on hold. And it is our recommendation, Randy and mine, that we proceed with a used tractor. So yes, it's three years old, but it really doesn't have that many hours on it. And I don't know if Dan wants to speak to it. Dan has a tractor, I've seen him use it at his place, so it seems as if this is a, we don't always have to buy new. And in this case, it seems like it's a really good used piece of equipment that will ultimately service our needs. So our proposal, we have it on hold. They held it for us pending tonight's decision, and if the board is so inclined, we would purchase the used tractor.
Anybody have any questions or comments for Scott?
It's a 2018 tractor, it's got 94 hours on it. That's, those are, the way they do tractors is by the amount of time the engine is running, and that is very low. And for $49,900, which include the actual tractor, the cab, the loader, the loader's that bucker in the bucket in the front, the third function is what you need when you have a grappler, and it comes with a grappler, so it allows the thing to go grab things, not just up, down, flip, has a front snow blower, 72-inch rear blade, 48-inch forks, that's for like a forklift, and that grappler. It's, I, the A and F committee unanimously recommended we bring it to the board for approval.
Thank you, Dan. Ellen, you had your hand up.
I'm looking for your hand, because you're after me. I was supposed to make the motion. I wasn't seeing.
I thought you were pointing at somebody over there. I was like, I don't see anyone.
I wasn't seeing.
Right. Any other comments, questions? Go ahead, Jared.
I understand the old tractor's at the end of life. What are we doing? Is there a salvageable value for it?
Yeah, I apologize, I should have mentioned that. Our approach is going to be to try to sell it, put it out to bid, and we don't need it, we don't need to store it. So it has a couple of attachments with it, we would, we would put it out to bid as, from like an auction-type perspective.
But Scott, we also talked about that...
Oh, asking if the town wanted it, and I did reach out to them.
Okay.
And Parks and Rec at least does not want it because they're happy with theirs.
Yeah, that was my ask, was if the town had any interest in the tractor before we went to sell it.
So it's just DPW that I have to reach out to, but I did reach out to Parks and Rec, and they don't have an interest in it.
Thanks, Jared. All right.
All right. So I'm going to motion to authorize the business administrator and/or facilities director to purchase the used Kubota tractor as presented at cost and not to exceed $50,000, including any possible delivery or setup charges, should they be required by the dealer. Said funds are to come from the Goffstown School District Capital Reserve Fund.
Thank you, Caroline. Do I have a second?
Second.
Up by Dan. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous. Thank you, Scott.
All right, the next one is, we're accepting a donation for the GHS turf project. This is a small donation, albeit a very kind one. We received a $1,000 check to purchase furniture for the press box, and the donation came from the gentleman who play at 6 o'clock in the morning, they play basketball, they're part of our Parks and Recreation Program. They use Mountain View Middle School. Billy Sorette and Brian Disco are kind of like the folks, they charge people, you know, for, to play, and then they collect money. And I know Wendy, they've, Mountain View, they've given funds to help with different things, so it's a kind group of folks. And there's no need for a public hearing, but there is a need to accept the $1,000. Caroline, I think has a, Caroline has a motion.
So I'll motion to accept the donation of $1,000 from the Men's Pickup Basketball League, which will be used for the press box furniture.
Thank you, Caroline. Do I have a second? Ginny, Ginny seconded Denise. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous.
So next on your agenda are budget transfers. I have two budget transfers tonight. You should have a memo in front of you that outlines that. So the first one is a special education out of district placement budget transfer, and essentially, we did have an unbudgeted out of district placement that we are looking to fund through the profit line in the budget. I am recommending that we transfer monies from the special education charter school tuition line, which, to the special education out of district tuition line in the amount of $50,000.
So I'll motion to authorize the business administrator to process the special ed out of district budget transfer in the amount of $50,000 as presented.
Thank you, Caroline. Second by Ellen. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous. Go ahead, Scott.
And then the last budget transfer is for GHS athletics. So the high school has long had a girls' competitive cheer team for many years. The cheer mats, many of people don't know this, but they're not owned by the district, and, but rather a private entity, and the AD would like to purchase cheer mats for this longstanding program. The budget transfer would come from the Mountain View Athletics Transportation Line. As you know, we've had a difficulty with drivers, so that money is available, and that transfer would go to the new equipment line at Goffstown High School for the purchase of the mats. That purchase will take, the delivery on those is two to three months. That's why I'm bringing in this to you now, because we would need them for the start of the school year. And also have a motion prepared on that.
All right.
So I'll motion to authorize the business administrator to process the GHS athletic budget transfer in the amount of $10,500 as presented.
Second. Second by Ellen. Any further discussion? Go ahead, Jared.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Scott, now that we've kind of come too close to the end of the fiscal year, and I know that you're presenting budget transfers, do you have an estimate of what our budget surplus is going to be at the end of the year?
Working on that. Right now, we are at about a 1.3 to 1.4 budget surplus. We also have a revenue surplus as well, so I'll have more information for you on June 5th. I always like to get later on in the school year in terms of hitting those targets for what I like to consider a return of the tax rate. So right now, we're on track to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jared. Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous. Okay, Scott.
So I just have a couple of just notifications for you, but one of the notifications will need an affirmation from the board. First is the alt-ed lease option year. So we have, for those of you who don't know, we do lease space from New England Sheet Metal on Depot Street. For many years, we've been using it for the alt-ed program. In the, in future years, we're looking for space for other programs within the school district. We're looking at putting, we have space, obviously, space issues, putting some of our IT folks there, some of our admin assistants possibly there, and just other business entities to free up space in our buildings. The cost of that space includes heat, electricity, et cetera. It's pretty affordable, it's about $27,000 a year for, you know, housing those individuals. I did reach out to New England Sheet Metal about extensions and/or an extended lease, and they provided us with the ability for three one-year options, which is great. And that's what we have had before, where, and then a couple of years ago, they would only give me like a one- or two-year option, but they did give us three option years, so I'm, you know, at, each year, we're allowed to exercise that option, which is a nice benefit. They've been truly wonderful partners to deal with, very accommodating to the school district, so I want to thank Dustin McConnell and those there who work with. But that being said, I did sign off on that, but I think it would be important for the board to at least affirm what I did.
So I'll motion to affirm the agreement of the landlord and tenant to extend the lease term now scheduled to expire on June 30th of 2023 for three additional one-year terms, referenced in the memo dated May 5th, 2023.
Second. Thank you, Caroline. Second by Ellen. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous. Go ahead, Scott.
And then the last one is, the superintendent and I get notifications whenever they are, there's a notice before the planning board of a development. So they are, is a proposal of a townhouse development very close to the Shell Station on Mast Road. These are all three-bedroom townhomes. It would be a private road going in as of right now, and Joanne Duffy asked that I present this to you. There is the ability for the school board to either go in person during this presentation of the developer or to send a letter. I don't believe I need anything from you this evening. I do have some concerns, and I've shared those with the superintendent in terms of, we're talking a very busy state road and having a bus stop on Route 114. These are opportunities for the school district to request modifications to their site plan and how they develop that property. And in our A and F meeting, I tried to give the example of a potential request. Again, I don't need an answer tonight, but if you look at Hillsborough County Nursing Home, and you're on 114, it has a little area where sometimes people hold political signs, or they stop, or whatever, maybe they use a cellphone, but that's a safe way of being off of a very busy road where it could be something like that akin to a bus stop. But these are the opportunities where as a school board, school district, you could tell the developer, hey, while we respect your right to develop the property, we would respectfully request that you put a safe means of having students wait for a bus and perhaps a shelter, okay? Because you're having, there's quite a few units on that plan.
30.
So again, I don't need a decision from you this evening, but if there are some things that you want as part of the development, now is the time for you as a school district to ask the developer to incorporate those into their plans. For me, I notified you that the Truck Center does not go into private streets and everything, so they would, they would pick up on 114, and I'm just, you know, asking the board respectfully to consider either directing me to write them a letter, or one of you to appear, or, you know, to say, this is what we would like to see differently. So we oftentimes can't, as a school board, effectuate change via denying someone the right to develop their property, but you can ask for things that would make things safer or more, you know, better for the student, so.
Go ahead, Ellen, you had your hand up.
Yes, when is this planning board meeting?
I'll get you the date, I'm not, I'm not really sure.
Okay.
But I think it's coming up, you know, this summer.
Oh, this summer, so it's not this month?
Well, it's probably June or July, yeah, I'll get you a date.
So would you need direction tonight, though?
I don't think so.
That's what I'm wondering.
I don't, I don't think I do. So I think this thing can wait till, till June 5th.
June 5th.
I don't like to spring things like on you, so I think this can wait one more meeting. If it's something wrong, if it's something different than that, I will then just let the planning board director, the planning director, know that we've got concerns about the bus stops.
Absolutely. Anyone else have any input? Go ahead, Jared.
Oh, yeah, I'd like to attend or get the date as well. They didn't ask for a waiver of the impact fees for this project, did they? So they are expecting to have school-aged children, most likely.
Oh, yeah. I mean, this is, this is not an over 55. This is a three-bedroom townhouse, so there will be, if you recall the Mark Fugere report, I mean, this is, this is the 1.62 option, yeah, per household.
So 15, or 45 additional kids in our school system are estimated from this.
Right, that's not including Bog, but it's also got 70-some townhouses.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Jared. Go ahead, Ginny.
I would think it'd be a really good idea to go in while it's in the planning stages still and really make that point where this needs to be done. That's a really busy road, and for kids, that many kids to be standing out on a main thoroughfare is just crazy. So I would think that that would be something that would be mandated on a development like that.
We need to make a motion to that effect.
Well, I think we'll come back to it.
Or we could ask, anyway.
To have more information.
I think Scott was trying to avoid springing this on you, but we will have a pretty full agenda on June 5th. I would say if you feel like you're, you feel strongly that Scott's recommendation is a good one, I would act on it now.
Sure. I'd be willing to.
All right, so if someone wants to do a motion, if you're comfortable with it.
I'll make a motion for Scott to speak to them about firmly requesting that they make some safe arrangements for a bus stop area for the kids there.
With a shelter.
With a shelter.
All right, so a motion by Ginny. Do I have a second?
Here.
By Nicole.
How about an optional shelter? Because I'm not sure every bus stop in town has a shelter, I know.
They don't.
Yeah.
Yeah, but this is far away from the houses. So the kids...
Many of them are. I see, I see a lot of cars sitting there.
Yeah.
I'm...
Option gives a little bit more.
It's an ask, Dan. It's an ask.
It's a request.
If we would do it with, as a request, that would be great. If we did it as a, like, it was a, I read your motion more as a more firm thing. The way Scott had put it during his presentation was perhaps a shelter, but then again, I'm not sure we have it.
Dan, do you think they're going to do it if we say, would you pretty please put a shelter there?
Which needs maintenance, and what kind? Like a bus stop? I mean, there's so many...
So how, how about putting it a little bit more firmly and hopefully it'll get there?
I think they need to have something off of 114, absolutely.
Right, the safe place to bus pull over.
And even if, if the bus turned off the way it does at the, at the county nursing home and puts their, their stop sign on, it's a little confusing. Does that stop the traffic on 114 or not?
Right.
I'm not sure. I, if I would come down, I would probably stop because I didn't want, I wouldn't want to get in trouble.
Right.
But how would that work?
Yep.
So the way the motion is, it's perfect. A safe way to load and unload.
Okay. So we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. Okay, we're unanimous. Thank you, Scott.
I think one that wasn't on the agenda, I don't know if you, I can hit it within one minute?
Yeah, I'd like to hit it, because June 5th is heavy, so let, it's just, it's the MOU.
No, I, I got one more.
You have one more?
That I totally forgot about.
Okay, because I want to do the MOU.
Yeah, all right. So last week, I met with yet another donor who was looking to contribute to the high school to address a potential Phase 2. So this donor had asked me about what were some of the things that we could not do because of budget and money constraints for the project out back. They asked for the school district, me specifically, to come up with Phase 2 of planning for what that would look like, to assist in the funding. This person appears to have the means to assist us greatly, very similar, perhaps, to the half-million-dollar donation that we received from the field out back as well. So with that, I would just need, I don't want to do this alone. I would like to start on Phase 2 planning over the summer, but I would like the board's authority to allow me to proceed with Phase 2 planning to address, you know, that and get back to the board and this donor in the fall. But I need to, that authorization would probably help to have that now so I can get working on it.
Go ahead, Ellen.
I move that we, although I expect to go ahead and move on making plans for Phase 2, did you call it?
Yeah.
Of the, of the fields and things that we need.
Great, thank you. Shane, are you seconding?
I just had a quick question. Scott, do you have any idea what might go into Phase 2?
So initially, we're talking about bathrooms. We were talking about the potential of netting. So you'll see on the far sides, we don't have what's called ball netting. The other one, what, that we didn't, weren't able to do was a bleacher addition. So those were the three, more or less, big items.
Great, thank you.
All right, so I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thanks, Shane. Any further discussion?
I think it's awesome that the community's coming forward.
Yeah.
I just, thanks so much because...
Yeah, absolutely.
There's so many things that we can't do that we'd like to do for kids, and it's awesome that people are coming forward to, to help.
Yeah, definitely. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous. Bless you, Dan. All right, so in your pocket, you do have the MOU, it's not on the agenda, but...
Yeah, it is. It's on your business.
Page 2.
Oh, it's on, all right, then we can come back to it.
Okay.
All right. Moving on, Budget Committee, Jared.
Budget Committee, we had our first meeting last Tuesday.
Budget Committee, we had our first meeting last Tuesday. It was a most excellent meeting. A little bit longer than I'm used to for a first meeting. However, there was discussion about facility tours, Mr. Superintendent, so I didn't know if we would want to do those on a Tuesday kind of situation where the Budget Committee gets together or a weekend situation. It sounded like the.
Were they looking for something more before the end of the school year, next fall?
Could be during the summer. It could be, I think it's really wide open. I just want to make sure that I go in with a plan of what we prefer. I know the Budget Committee Chair is right down there right now and probably listening intently to what was.
So I would say the same whether she was sitting right over.
Hey.
Sitting right, oh, Joe. We're happy to do whatever the Budget Committee would like. So if they would like to do a weekend, if you would like to do weekdays, we'll do our best to make sure that there are administrators available for the tour. It usually makes sense, Jared, to do the tours prior to budget season starting so that we can highlight some of the items that Budget Committee members would anticipate hearing about. So my recommendation would be to do it in the fall.
Okay.
But if the preference is to do it over the summer, we're happy to do that, too.
Okay. No, very good. And the next Budget Committee meeting is currently scheduled for May 20th, tentatively scheduled at 6:00 PM with a tour of the Fields Outback being done for that. So I think it's a good opportunity just to showcase the work that we do through the donations and everything else with the Budget Committee.
Thank you, Jared. All right, PNC, Rhonda.
That's why I ran.
Yes, I know.
Keep talking, Jared.
Keep going.
So we had a quite a full agenda this evening as well. We will be having non-public later this evening regarding scholarships. I just wanted to thank all the schools for their, the people that recognize volunteers during Volunteer Appreciation Week. So we're happy that went out and people participated. Teacher Appreciation Week was last week and the video, all of you that got onto the video, it was really great. That was, it was a lot of fun, a little nerve-wracking doing it, but I think, you know, it went out.
One take.
Seriously?
I know it was quick.
You did one take?
Yes.
Wow, that's nice.
That's impressive, Jared.
Warriors, 25, me.
It's only like 12 seconds, though, so.
So I thought it was great that, you know, all of the board members had a chance to, you know, share some words. I think Jen did an awesome job. She's been doing a great job with GTV with videos. We did talk about the website a little bit and I think this will become part of our action plan next year. There's a number of items that I think are going to need to take a little more time in figuring out exactly what it is that we'd like to see done with the website, understanding that staffing and time is somewhat limited. We may be looking into having somebody, paying somebody to maintain it because it really is sitting in the IT side of the house and their time is very limited. So anyways, we'll continue that conversation. I do want to just, we did talk about the retreat agenda. A reminder that we do have the retreat coming up on June 19th from 3:00 to 8:00 PM as the same day. And as part of that, there will be a board self-evaluation reflection. So we'll be sending that out probably early June. It won't be long. Just for a way for us to reflect on what went well, what didn't go so well. We'll have a conversation at the retreat. We may not have another meeting because I think the June 5th meeting, there was going to be non-public ahead of time. So I think our next meeting won't be until August and will be just prior to whenever the next board meeting is in August. So that's it.
Awesome. Thank you, Rhonda. All right. Policy review. We met last week. We'll have more first reads later on and we have questions and answers for the last first reads. We are going to have one more meeting in June, just to finish up a couple of policies we have in the queue, on June 12th at 5:30 at the SAU. See and e. Jenny?
We have not had a meeting since our last and our next meeting is on May 22nd at 6:00 PM at the SAU. It's a different time for us.
Yeah, because you're not on the same day as us.
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Jenny. Okay, Superintendent's Report.
Thank you. Unfortunately, I start with sad news. The board is aware that we had the death of a student at Mountain View Middle School. I'd like to extend my condolences to the family of Javier Marte. Just an incredible tragedy to lose someone so young. Continuing the sad news, we had the death of a former food service person who worked for us for many, many years. So if the board hadn't heard, Diana Papino had passed away and Diana worked for us for a really long time and was a good woman. So I'm very sad for her family. So sad news to start with. I would remind the board that we have Mr. Fred Bermonte coming on Tuesday, May 30th, which is right after our holiday weekend. He will be here in this room doing a presentation on the proposed changes to ED 306, which are the so-called minimum standards. These are very important rules that all New Hampshire school districts have to comply with. Mr. Bermonte is doing 17 listening sessions around the state. I requested one of those be held here in Goffstown and that will be on the 30th at 6:30 PM. I wanted to let you know that we had some concerns with respect to the high school lunch series and the board will recall that we had what I would say is kind of a rare disagreement that the high school and high school administration and food services director were still working out a few items that were unresolved. And I wanted to let you know that Mr. Gross did a great job. He helped work through this. And at this point, Mrs. Bizarro is fully on board and supportive of the one lunch. We have procured new space for the food program, that they're going to have permanent space, which is actually going to be right down this hallway outside of the gym lobby where they're going to have additional areas where they can do kind of the kiosk selling that we had heard about in the past. So at this point, the high school administration and our food services director have resolved everything. I think we're in agreement. I know Mr. Gross is. So I wanted to let the board know that. And we had planned on bringing a presentation basically on this same topic on June 5th. So I would ask you if that's something that you still want or if you feel like, given that we've resolved the issue, that at this point, we're good. So I would maybe ask the board for a little bit of guidance on that.
Go ahead, Shane.
What was the resolution?
The biggest one is that Mr. McBride found additional space that goes to the food services program where they're going to be able to do some more kiosk-type sales. So part of the problem had been that they were basically moving equipment back and forth every single day and there was no permanent location to house all the equipment to do the sales. And without having that, it was, it was really creating a hardship on our food services program to be able to move all the equipment, serve the kids, do all the logistics, take care of the funding, pay for everything, and then move everything back. So now with them having a permanent location, it's made things from a logistical perspective much, much easier. Scott, anything else that you would add to that?
No, I think it was the logistics issue. Before, they were bringing everything to the theater area. We talked about how would we build a more permanent kiosk there. It would have probably approached over $10,000 with electrical built and doing all the build-out, all that. Whereas in the space where that they have now settled in on, it was previously used by food service so that we have minimal electrical needs. The kit, the food service folks are comfortable working in that, in that space. So it kind of was like a really good, healthy compromise to make, you know, to kind of make this work. So I feel that everything kind of worked out in the end. I still think that we're going to proceed next year and we, I don't, none of us know what will happen with the student population here. So as the student population increases, it becomes more challenging to do one lunch period. But for now, where we're at with student enrollment, this seems to be a really good compromise. And the other thing that I should mention, Brian, is that they are looking to do more breakfasts and, you know, to try to capture some of those sales early on in the day. So rather than students going to Dunkin's, maybe you'll have some nice, warm, delicious muffins, scones, perhaps, Brian. Brian is a big cinnamon chip scone guy, okay?
This is bougie.
But this could be bigger than Dunkin's, okay? You've got to keep an open mind, all right, Lily? And I think that you're going to push this.
Open-minded.
Okay.
Yeah. And I just want to say on behalf of the student body, we thank you. I know all of my friends and beyond are very grateful for your consideration for the one lunch because we all really love it. So, thank you.
So in a nutshell, we were able to resolve all the issues with the one lunch. Everyone's happy now and so we're able to move forward with that.
Correct.
So me personally, as long as I know that, I don't need my presentation, but that's just me.
How does everybody else feel? Go ahead, Dan.
I would like to see, this has been a big issue for us. I would like maybe a five or 10-minute or just put up some little schematics together or a little PowerPoint and it doesn't even have to be a big presentation, but I think, I would like to see some of the statistics. Where are the food sales going like we normally do unless we have that on our plan for June 19th? Where are we with that? Where's the food service budget going to end up?
Oh, you're going to get that on June 5th. Megan's doing a presentation on.
On June 5th?
Yeah. I'm pretty sure, yeah.
If Megan is coming.
Does that satisfy what you're looking for, though, Dan?
I think it will be because Megan's going to present the financials.
Yes.
Is that it, Scott?
Yep.
Well, that's where I'm coming to go. The financials relate completely to the single lunch.
Okay.
And so they morph together, so that's fine. Well, how about this? Megan will be here anyhow. If there are questions about the lunch model, you're free to speak to her then, but I won't plan to have other high school folks here, if that's. Oh, I wasn't planning on the other. It was from the food service side completely.
Yeah, that they're financially doing well.
Only. That I was interested in.
Thank you. And I would like to thank Mr. Gross. He has been instrumental in continuing to push to make sure that we figure this out and get Mrs. Bizarro the space she needs.
Yeah.
So that's really important. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you, Scott.
So I had hoped that I would be here asking you to rescind temporary regulation EBCF, which is our pandemic response. We're almost there, folks. It's shocking to me, but the CDC is still requiring masking. There are still requirements that are happening. So I'm not going to ask you for a motion to rescind the temporary regulation EBCF, but I would like to point out that it was only for this school year. So my expectation would be that that temporary regulation sunsets at the end of this school year. We don't know what requirements we may have for people who are COVID-positive, but I am very much looking forward to moving on. So unless anyone disagrees, I would anticipate that the regulation would sunset and it was specifically for this school year. So at this point, we talked a little bit during the school funding fairness presentation, but we are anticipating that we are likely to receive increased revenue in the next fiscal year. This is going to create what we would call a nice problem to have. It's a good thing to get more revenue, so we're appreciative of that. But I wanted to let the board know there's a couple of different ways that we can handle that. And we'll talk a little more about this. This will be part of our discussion as well, I believe, at the retreat. But I wanted to let you know that at this point, we don't know what the revenues for next year are going to be. When we did our budget, we projected revenues. All that was a projection. We had no tangible sense of knowing exactly what the revenues would be, but at this point, we expect the revenues to be slightly higher. Scott, do you want to say anything else about this?
Yeah, it's more than slightly. It could be upwards of a million dollars more. And that is just if you took a look at what was handed out earlier from Representative Alexander between the House and the Governor's plans, it could be a million. So that's quite a bit. My concern.
So the question is whether we're able to spend that, whether we accept that money as coming in as revenue only.
Right. So it's tricky.
It's going to be used for offsetting the taxes.
Right. So it's very tricky in terms of can you spend it? Do you have to have a special meeting in order to spend it? So I'll hear more, but the last time this happened, we had put it right into fund balance. It was about $300,000. Then when it's a million dollars, you do have to worry about like these, you know, big drops in the tax rate. Then next year, it's a $2 million. So you want to try to stabilize as best you can. And we'll talk about it at the retreat, but when you have as many things on your mini CIP and CIP, I know that that's not the greatest thing to talk about is end-of-year type spending, but if it's transparent and people, the community knows what's going on and what the circumstances are, I just, I want to give the board all options and you can do whatever you want. But I don't, I just want to be transparent about it and I want to let you know that we have different ways of kind of dealing with it.
Thank you, Mr. Gross.
Nicole, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, just a quick question. So it's because it's likely coming in as increase-based adequacy, but we are already budgeted out, so we can't spend it on adequacy essentially.
So, yeah, so that's pretty much it.
Maybe, yeah.
That's pretty much it. So we have the ability to hold a special meeting, in which case we would have the ability to ask for the ability to spend that. But we'll kind of get to that when we get closer. But at this point, we're anticipating this to happen. So we just wanted to let everyone know.
Go ahead, Jenny.
Is this money that's coming in, is this a one-year only or is this gone going?
This would continue, this would continue on. But as I, as I shared with Brian this morning, I want to always try to be way ahead of the game and start thinking about these things, have it discussed publicly. You saw the spreadsheet or the sheets that were handed out hopefully before. I have them here if you're gone. I can send them to you. But both Goffstown and New Boston are part of those communities that have that low, lower equalized assessed valuation per pupil. And because of that, the formula that they're using for extra money, funds distribution helps New Boston, helps Goffstown. But what I don't know is that unless they put in the bill, the opportunity to spend it, as you were saying, we could be in a situation where, yes, you have this money, but it must go, you either have to hold a special election to spend it or it must drop into fund balance, which then kind of defeats the purpose. So last time this happened, numerous communities held special elections, just so you know. We didn't because it wasn't worth it. It was about $200,000 to $300,000. But if it's a million, that's a completely different story, in my opinion. Whereas you could opt to have X amount go towards tax relief, you could have X go towards your CIP, you know, some of these projects that are just hanging out there. Because all that'll do is it'll just take them off the list. So again, just throwing that out there.
Thank you, Mr. Gross.
Thanks. Go ahead.
Well, if I may.
Oh, sorry, Dan. I didn't see your hand up.
Are you saying the RSA is changing, Scott, or is this in the budget bill?
I don't know yet, Dan. That's the whole thing. I don't know because there is an RSA that deals with.
The formula.
No, no.
No, there's.
This is not a formula.
There's an RSA that.
I'll send it to you.
Yeah, that impacts if school districts receive increased revenues.
Increased revenue through adequacy. And it's, so I'll send you the statute.
Okay.
But it's, as with everything that we do, nothing is easy. This is super complicated. And as I learn more, I will share.
Totally agree. And as we were talking about tonight, about different ways of supporting and shifting the cost burden from the local to the state, if the state is increasing their share of it, isn't that what we're supposed to do to reduce the local share? Something to think about, guys, if that's the thing. So it wouldn't be a modification in a one-time whack at the tax rate. It would be a complete shift.
Hopefully, yes.
That's very much what we would like to see.
Yeah. And that's, if that's what we're talking about, then we can't really grab that money and just spend it on one things, although we can talk about it because we have a lot of need. So what do we do with that? That's a question for us to talk about.
So more to come on that.
Yep.
Continuing, if I may. So the board will recall that over the last several years, we changed our high school graduation model. We changed to going to the Northeast Delta Dental Baseball Park. As you know, we're returning to St. Anthony's College this year and we're pleased to let you know that the school board will again be funding a senior barbecue on that graduation day. So that's something that we have done for a really, really, really long time. So that will be coming back. So I wanted to let you know that.
Do you have a date time?
Uh.
In the past, school board members have assisted.
In the past, the board members, yeah, would serve.
We helped serve. If people are interested, I'm sure we're always happy to take some donated labor. So if anyone is available on graduation day, if you want to let me know as we're starting to plan out that, I would appreciate it. And it's fun. It's, we used to cook. We used to do all the work.
Yeah.
And it was, yeah. Now, now we tend to do more of the fun stuff where we serve the kids and get to hang out and.
Yeah, it is fun.
Spend time with the students.
200 degrees.
Do you know what they end, yeah?
High school graduation?
15.
15. Thank you.
Brian, we'll have to talk with the high school since Mountain View does have their promotional exercise at 2:00 on the same day, just to make sure that we're thinking about parking and all those things.
Yeah, we'll figure it out.
Yeah, good point.
So I, a couple of other things, if I may. So the board will recall that we had some changes in our insurance electives and the board approved, approved a number of these changes. We neglected to include a change for people that are non-union who pay 100% of the premiums. So we have the ability to allow people to pay premiums at 100% of their cost. That would include school board members or other local elected officials at 100% of your cost. But we neglected to change the benefits for the category of G5, which would include any elected members in this capacity. So if you were so. So if you were so inclined, I might ask for your approval for the following changes to the elected officials' class G5 health and dental benefit options effective July 1, 2023, which includes a change of the Blue Cross Plan to the 2,500 or 5,000 luminos with no deductible funding. Change the AB5 to AB20. Keep the site of service plan as it is and change the dental from 1A to 1J. So those are consistent with the changes to all the other categories that we've already done. We neglected to do so for the G5 category.
Do you need a motion?
Please.
I mean, that we make the change as presented for the G5 category.
Thank you, Alan. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, Dan. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, or unanimous?
Thank you. I appreciate that. That was an oversight on our part. We should have done that earlier. I appreciate it. So I wanted to let you know that the state is no longer allowing us to submit for adequacy aid for foreign exchange students. Here we go. Nickel and dime. You know, again, it just continues to erode away at adequacy. In my last piece, I wanted to inquire if the board would have availability at our next meeting. We are looking to start the meeting early and would like to hold non-public from 6:00 to 7:00. We will have our police and fire chiefs joining us. And I was hoping that we could have 6:00 to 7:00 as opposed to at some time at the end of the board meeting, when we typically do non-public. So I don't know what people's availability looks like. If 6:00 to 7:00 works or doesn't work for folks' schedule, I wanted to inquire if I would, if I could, please.
Our next meeting is June 5th.
June 5th.
An hour?
An hour.
Do you think we'll need the whole hour? Is this for security-related?
Yes. Yes, it's for emergency planning and emergency preparedness.
Okay.
I do think we'll probably use the whole hour.
Okay.
I do.
I would then ask A and F how early you would want to meet. Maybe a few minutes before that at 5:30.
Yeah, and I let Mr. Gross know, I apologize that this potentially impacts your subcommittee, but if there was a way that we could try to work around that.
I think that's easy. It's okay for me.
Yeah, we can meet at 5:30.
We can meet at 5:30?
5:30. Is everybody available to meet at 6:00?
At 6:00?
He's sitting in for A and F. You're.
Everybody's good for the 6?
6:00 to 7:00?
6:00 to 7:00.
Question.
Okay, great. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Well, actually, wouldn't we just say the meeting starts at 6:00? And we're gonna.
Go into non-public.
The first item agenda after the pledge will be going into non-public.
Going into non-public.
Because if it takes us a little longer than 7:00, it takes us longer than 7:00. We start the meeting at 6:00.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Great.
Okay. So put that on the agenda.
And the other way around.
Great, thank you.
If it goes quicker, we can continue the meeting and don't have to wait till 7:00.
That's true.
I like the sound of that, too, Dan.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Is that it?
That's it. Thank you very much.
All right, old business. So last time, April 17th, you guys got first reads. Tonight is if anybody had any questions on any of them. If not, then they come back June 5th for second reads with motions to move forward. Does anybody have any questions on any of the policies from last time?
I have a question about this process, if I may.
Sure.
What sort of questions are you looking for? Like, I don't want to bring, obviously, like typos and grammatical stuff to the board on this.
Actually, you probably might want to.
Well, I have a lot of that, so I don't know. I don't know that that's the best use of this time, but.
No.
Yeah.
It's not.
So.
Usually, you would go to Denise if you saw something minor, but this is for if you wanted something significantly changed with the content.
So if there's like a full sentence or paragraph, for example, that maybe the meaning is unclear, or that would be sort of inappropriate use?
Yeah.
Okay.
Email Denise, right?
What was that?
Email Denise.
Yeah, yeah. So the process with the policies is before they come to the committee, it goes to the administration, it deals with it, and they go through the whole thing line by line with, they put recommendations usually in red, whether it's through the New Hampshire School Boards Association, what the law is. And then it comes to the committee, and then we go line by line by line. So what you see is been vetted through different steps, and then we recommend, this is what we're recommending to the full board.
So at this stage of the game, only really content questions?
Yeah.
Okay.
And if you see anything minor with clerical stuff, you can email Denise, but we try not to. Like, we've tried to kind of pre-decided, like he, she, that kind of stuff, so that we're not wasting committee time fixing little things. Do you have any content stuff?
Uh, yeah. So are we going through each, or are we just?
If you have any questions on any, then we just pick that one. Like, you know, do you have one on every single policy?
Um, not everyone, maybe like half.
Okay. Is this content changing or clarification?
Um, more clarification for most of them. Let me find.
Okay. So pick one policy, let me know, and we'll go to it.
I'm gonna pick what I think is probably the most critical here. Okay, one of my questions was on JICLR.
Direct?
So student using computers devices in the internet.
Yep, what page?
First page, number one. We're saying we're using district-owned technology and personally-owned technology devices for school purposes, whether on or off school property. I'm wondering how the school is in charge of personal devices being used off of school property.
Brian, do you want to answer that?
I believe this was the connection of personal equipment connecting to school-related infrastructure, off property.
So it says that in number two, but it doesn't say that in number one.
Yep.
I mean, if that's, if that's the intent, maybe it should just be above that, so it's an all-encompassing of those items. Um, yeah.
From my recollection from Stephen, it was repetitive.
Right.
It wasn't meant to be exclusive.
Shane, do you remember?
So the very first paragraph says, quote, "Use of technology includes, number one, using district-owned technology and personally-owned devices for school purposes, whether on or off property." So it just says for school purposes. She would specifically say connected to a school network or program. I'm just.
We would have to separate those, I think, if we were gonna do that for a school connect, because any district-owned technology is not supposed to be used for personal purposes.
Yeah, so what I'm taking issue with here is it's saying personally-owned devices off school property. So I don't know how that we would ever control that.
You can't.
And why we should. Right, so, but that's how it reads.
Unless it's connected.
To the school server.
To the school infrastructure, which is kind of like number two.
Yeah.
Okay, just putting out there. It reads like any use, not just connected to the school.
Well, actually.
And it says for school purposes, whether you're on or off.
Right.
So the intent is whether it's a personal computer or a school-owned computer, if you're connecting for school purposes, it's covered under this regulation.
But it doesn't say connecting until number two.
It doesn't need to say. It's a school purpose.
Right.
So any school purpose automatically assumes you're connecting to the school network?
Any school purpose.
So if I'm researching. Using a private computer. Paper on my laptop using the internet, that counts as a school purpose or no?
Are you going to be submitting it to the school through a portal?
I don't know what the assignment is.
If it's being submitted through a portal, then it would be covered under this regulation.
Right, okay.
It would actually be covered under the term "use of technology."
Right.
That was the intent.
Yeah. Was there another one?
Actually, so KFR, page one, number four. It says all facility use requests must be initiated using the online portal, speaking of portals. And then we've deleted online portal once school facilities request from KFR. Are we saying that you use the online portal to access that form? Or are we intending to replace using the online portal with a different form?
So you're on page one of 17.
Yeah, number four.
I could say that the online portal through school dude has not been, has not worked. And the thought process was, was to always sort of align policy with what practice is. And right now, practice is that we need to go back to more of a paper form or a PDF form. And doing this on the new platform that we're going to be getting, I'm not sure if that's going to be any better. So in talking with Randy and Dawn, you know, the, I initiated that because I think we just need to go back to a more of a PDF type of form. Folks are not being, I don't know, forthright in terms of how many people are attending these events. You know, like, if it's over 100, they have to get, have a control, crowd control person as insurance reasons for it. It just did not, the online school dude, the intent was there, but it did not work out. So this was just a way of acknowledging it and saying.
You completely answered my question, because it just, it's there once, still in the, in the policy.
Yeah.
And then it's also crossed out once, so I just was trying to clarify.
Okay, so that was the deal to get rid of it.
Got it.
It's not working.
Okay, that was it.
Is there any other policies that you had questions on?
Nope, that was it.
No?
Thanks.
Thank you, Nicole. All right, so these will come back June 5th. All right, so now, new business, the MOU.
Mr. Gross?
The MOU, S-E, no, that's Mickey Mouse. MOU with Hookset. So we have a five-year memorandum of understanding. See, someone's like, back there, okay.
You can always find one person who likes his jokes. Usually, it takes a bigger crowd, but I'm glad you found one tonight.
I've got good material from this afternoon's conversation. I'm gold. So the, so the Hookset MOU, we've had one for five years. For those of you who don't know, we do have a memorandum of understanding with the Hookset School District for tuition. Hookset does not have its own high school, and they have agreements in place with, I believe, five different school districts. The unique part of the Hookset issue is that they only pay a certain amount, and then they, the parent, guardian, et cetera, must pay the difference. So this year, it's 12.5, 12.5 or 12.75. And then the parent has to pay the remainder. So we do have one student here, and that parent has been on like a payment plan to do that every month. That is set to expire on June 30th, so now we have to have another MOU or an extension of that. So essentially, what you have before you is that extension, change the dates, changed the fact that now we are using a tuition calculation, which is, I used the word similar in the agreement, the intent was the same. So Dan will clarify that at the end. But as the New Boston tuition, so we don't have a different methodology. Whatever methodology we use for the New Boston area agreement is what we've been using for Hookset. And then there was a couple of housekeeping things, but by and large, this will allow us to accept Hookset students. Here's the positive. The positive is that Hookset has increased it by almost $3,000. So now, the disparity or that delta between what Hookset provides and what the parent has to pay, around a $1,000 difference, not 3,000. And that, we might see more students from Hookset come to Goffstown. We do not provide transportation, just so you know, they have to get here on their own. But with a $1,000 difference, we might see more, which is a, which is a big, big, you know, change. So Brian, was there anything else?
So, yeah, if I could just add a little more clarification. So kids in Hookset have the opportunity to attend Pinkerton Academy, number one. They have the ability to attend school in Manchester. I think that there's a whole complicated history there. They can attend school in Londonderry, Pembroke Academy, Boe, or Goffstown. So they have six different choices. And I'm excited that the amount is considerably higher. So I do hope that that might be something that entices some Hookset students to attend here. But we worked through the updates with the, with the Hookset superintendent and the business administrator. So I think at this point, oh, here's the number. So they increased the rate up to 15,408. So that's a big jump from 12 and change now.
Almost 3,000.
So I do hope that that might mean a couple more kids for us.
And just so you know, the Hookset School Board, I think it's tonight?
It's tonight, so they're voting on the same.
They're voting tonight. So these would all be based upon, I worded the motion like that, contingent upon.
So I'm gonna motion to accept the MOU between Hookset and Goffstown as presenting.
Thank you, Caroline Hope. Second by Ginny. Any further discussion?
Just a little bit.
Yeah, go ahead, Dan.
I would like the minutes to actually reflect my comment, which is item number six, which is tuition. Tuition, the word that is used in number six is we shall charge Hookset a per pupil base tuition rate that is similar to the area agreement. It is, this board's, I don't know if edict is the right word, but we shall charge them the same. So the word similar in thus means the same in this. So if we vote in the affirmative, because we're not going to charge anything different. What if we charge in New Boston, Hookset isn't going to get something cheaper.
And I would confirm in the record that that is exactly how we do it. We use that same exact tuition calculation. Identical.
Great, thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, I have a motion. I have a second. Any further discussion? Oh, sorry, go ahead, Alan.
I would just ask that we be very mindful of the numbers. Not the tuition amount, but only, but the number of children coming in our capacities here in future growth.
Of students coming in.
Number of students coming in. We just need to be very aware of that, I believe.
Right. And Mike?
This is a five-year, this is a five-year term.
And it only set up to a certain amount of students per year, didn't that?
Yep.
Didn't we clarify that? We've never come close to it.
We've never come close.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Alan. All right. All right, any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, or unanimous. Thank you, Scott.
All right.
All right, retirement stipends.
All right, so pretty much at the end of every, you know, year, we determine in the business office and with the superintendent, whether or not we...and N H R, whether or not we have the fiscal capacity, financial capacity, shall I say, to pay our retirement stipends for those who have opted to retire out of FY '23 versus FY '24. And this particular year, we do. We...I reviewed that with Kate, our H R director, and Laura, so we do have ample funding in our budget to cover that, so similar to some of the years prior where we've done something similar. We are prepared to do that. We're just...I will tell you that we have $220,000 budgeted. We have spent $75,500, and we have ample funds to encumber all of the others, which are about...we're still waiting on one particular retirement and/or possible rescission, but it's around $90,000 to $100,000, so we'll still have some balance in that. But I just wanted to let you know that we do have that capacity to do that. So just need a...if the board is so inclined, then just a motion to authorize myself and the H R director to pay those stipends prior to July 1st.
Seconded.
All right, a motion by Ellen, seconded by Jared. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, or unanimous. Thank you. All right, so the next packet is first reads. So this is what we just went over this past board meeting, so everything in red is what's been changed. So these will come back June 5th for questions and answers. All right, school staffing. We don't have staffing sheets.
You don't have staffing sheets.
Yeah, we do. Oh, I don't have staffing.
We share one. A&amp;F didn't get a staffing sheet. We'll share one.
Thank you.
I apologize.
That's okay.
So just a couple notifications for notification-only. Paul McCann is being transferred from the high school to Glen Lake, and that should say Mountain View Middle School. That says Maple Ave Elementary School. So Mr. McCann will be a part-time Title I teacher and a part-time interventionist. So that's a notification-only. We have a student teacher coming from Riviera University, Alexis...Alexis Chaney, maybe? Who'll be working with Eileen Mahoney and Mrs. Mannion, so two great English teachers for Alexis to work with. And last time, last one is we have a long-term substitute. One of our E L L teachers is out on leave, and we were very fortunate to find a certified English language learner teacher, so we will welcome Paula Sampson. For your approval, we have two resignations. Jennifer Freitas has resigned. She is, of course, resigning because she is our new S A U Special Ed Director, and we have a resignation from Kim Rivers, who is our Mountain View Special Ed facilitator. So we'll wish Kim well. She got a job as a preschool coordinator, which is, I guess, her love. She likes the young children, early childhood. Do you want me to keep going?
Yeah, I see there's three resignations. Why don't we just do them together?
So the last one is Kaylee Lemieux, who's resigned from Maple Ave.
And what's this one? Was that also...
Oh, that's...yeah, that's a...the last one's actually district. She Engendrin was a district position, and she is a mental health clinician, which will be a challenging role for us to fill.
All right, so I'll need a motion to accept the resignations.
Move to approve the...to accept the resignations as presented.
Thank you, Ellen. Do I have a second by Jared? Or did you have...
That's fine.
I'm sorry.
I can secondhand question, that's fine.
Sure, go ahead.
So just looking at the emotional behavioral specialist, that is going to continue through the summer, because this looks like in August.
Yeah, so she's going to continue to work the summer program, which we appreciate. Yes, that was...that was kind of how we worked it out with her, and we're appreciative that she was willing to do that.
Did you want a second?
Sure.
Okay. I just wanted to make...I didn't want to make you do it. All right, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, or unanimous. Okay, go on.
Yeah, and so for teacher nominations, these are...we've been busy hiring. So this doesn't list the number of years' experience, but Mrs. Kohler, Mrs. McGrath, and I were commenting just this morning that we have been hiring some pretty experienced teachers. So we've hired a number of people who are Step 16, so we're looking at a pretty experienced group with some of these folks. These are new people, with the exception of Ginny Sinclair, who is continuing on as a .4, which is 40% math teacher at the high...at Mountain View. And Miss Sinclair just kind of can't retire, and we're happy to continue to keep her math teachers, and she's a wonderful teacher. I'm glad to have her. So the rest of these, I won't read all their names, but we're happy to recommend them for nomination, and you'll see that there are a couple of special ed positions, as well as world language and math. Those are all very challenging positions for us to fill. So our administrators are doing a great job hiring.
Move to accept nominations as presented.
Thank you, Ellen. Do I have a second by Nicole? Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, or unanimous.
And then if you look at the bottom of the staffing sheet, it says "other," and there's a couple of other things. So the board will recall that when we did the budget presentations, we anticipated having staffing challenges associated with Maple Ave Elementary School because our numbers are so high and our class sizes are so large. So we have a number of positions that we have been holding on to and plan to repurpose to Maple Ave to support them next year. Specifically, I have one full-time adult alt-ed position that is being transferred to Maple as a teaching position. I have a second full-time alt-ed position that I'd like to transfer, which will be an administrative role. So that school, having gone quite a bit over 500, I am recommending a third administrator at Maple Ave to support them next year. We will do that with an existing teacher position. There will be a slight change there for funding, but when we have nominations, we'll bring that to you for more information. And lastly, a half-time science position that we don't need to fill for next year. We want to create an additional half-time nurse position to help support Maple Ave, and what we would do with that position is it would be a position that would be housed at Maple Ave as support, but would also cover other buildings if we had absences. So for example, if we had our nurse from Glen Lake School was out, or our nurse from Bartlett Elementary, I would reassign a nurse associated with that. But those are the three positions at this point. We've been working closely with Mrs. Pishka and Mrs. Johnson, so they know that we're recommending additional positions to help support Maple Ave. They are really full, really full. Our class sizes are large, and that ends up meaning there are a lot of challenges with supervision of students, arrival and dismissal, recess. There's just a lot of needs because we have so many kids, and class size is significant. The class size at Maple Ave is in the 25-plus kind of range, and those same classes at Bartlett have 10 fewer kids. So we have class sizes around 16 at Bartlett. I might have 26 at Maple.
I saw Dan and Ginny saying...go ahead, Dan.
Are these a temporary one-year request?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, so at this point, if there's anything more permanent, that we would do that through the budget process. Yeah, so we would anticipate that these would be positions that we likely will address during the budget process, but it could be just transferring them, you know, officially and formally. But we would start with these being one-year.
Ginny.
Where were these positions coming from?
So the two positions, the first two, the two full-time positions, are coming from the alt-ed positions that we're not using anymore.
Okay.
So the board will recall that we had an off-site alt-ed program that was housed at New England Sheet Metal. This was the very contract that Mr. Gross just spoke to earlier. We are not running that program in the same way as we have in the past, and those positions are being recommended for repurposing.
Okay.
Thank you, Ginny. Anyone else? Go ahead, Ellen.
Do we need to start thinking about another portal?
I hope not, Mrs. V. I really, really, really...
25, 26. It's another elementary school classroom?
Yeah, so...
That's not acceptable to me.
There are small classrooms, too.
And they're small classrooms.
Yep.
Yep, they sure are, and part of the discussion that we'll have at our retreat involves the challenges of space needs. I don't want to get into the whole litany of options right now, but the board has heard me talk about moving sections of fourth grade to Mountain View. We've talked about a couple of different options. We will have more in-depth discussion with all of you regarding that at the retreat.
Okay, because that would mean staffing as well.
Right, yeah.
Involved, and to me, those numbers are not acceptable for good education.
Do you need a motion for this?
I think at this point, I think a motion to approve the staffing changes, moving positions to Maple Ave would be appropriate.
So Ellen made a motion, and then who seconded it? Nicole? Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, we are unanimous.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, so last time, we all got the Goffstown School Board members' stuff, but there were some mistakes, so just make sure everything looks good on your sheet, that you have the right addresses and spelling and everything, and also the updated committee representative stuff. Any other business that may legally come before the meeting? Jared?
Just a correction. I think I said the next budget committee meeting was May 20th. I meant June 20th, if I did say May.
Yeah, you did. That's all right.
It is June 20th.
June 20th? Okay. Thank you, Jared. Anything else? Do we have non-public?
We do have non-public.
Just for giggles, should I bring that topic up that we weren't going to talk about, but because people are going to forget?
Yeah, thank you.
I don't think we need a specific list of all of the...I don't know if we ended up with that. I don't know where we ended up with that, a specific list. I just want to put it to bed.
Field trips.
Oh, I'll give a list.
I thought it was you were to talk to the principals.
I'm not sure that we want to do all that work.
It's a lot of work.
I think what I heard Ginny means...
We exist to serve the board, so if the board would like that information, I'm happy to compile it.
I think they're interested because if you get constituents saying, "Where are the kids going?", it's important, kind of like to us.
I'm getting things that say they're not going, and why not?
Right.
Oh, they are going. I mean, I could...
Well, I thought we ended that Brian was to talk to all the principals and make sure that if they wanted to do field trips. But do you want a full list of every school of field trips this past year?
That's what I'm planning to bring.
Is that what?
Yep.
And then I can just...people will know what's going on.
Yeah, and again, if...
And then we're good.
If people do have questions about field trips, I would encourage them to reach out to the building principals. So if a trip has or hasn't happened, that's where the authorization would lie. We have...I've been pretty clear. I think kids should be going on field trips. I think, you know, COVID kept a lot of people kind of cooped up, and I think we need to get the kids back out there, so...
And I'm not trying to be difficult. It's just that kids come up.
No, it's fine. It's fine. Thank you.
All right, anything else?
We do have non-public. We have to...
Which one?
Under C, so we have to do our scholarships tonight.
All right, so I'll need a motion to go into non-public under RSA 91 A32C. I'll need a motion.
So moved.
I was waiting for Jared. Motion by Radha, and a second?
Second.
All right. You will call.
Yes.
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 Nicole?
Oh, yes.
It's Shane's.
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. All right, so we need to go down.